It's the six thirty. I follow this meeting of the Manchester by the Sea Select Board to Order. This meeting is being recorded. Okay. Jeff.
Yeah.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes and no.
And yes.
Okay. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Particularly this thing for people online? There is not a, well, there's going to be a very short chairman's report. I'm still going to give you a quick report from Essex where the Essex Town Administration is saying that they plan to put the entire increase in the school budget on an override. So that will be level funded for us. There will be more later, but just have that in the back of your mind.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay, the Colleen Morris is of action items. Is there any comment on the action item? Anything that we need, anything we don't need? I noticed that there's something on here for I guess the new positions come under discussion. The new positions and the rearranging of the finance department.
That'll be part of your budget discussion later.
Importantly, okay. All right. Colleen Morris is unable to be here, so we won't be interviewing her. The next thing is the Friends of Trees presentation. We have, we have been asked to bless the new trees. I don't know that it's, and I think I would like to hear about them, so. Jody.
Thank you very much. Greg, can you, you have the little outline that I gave you if you wanted to share that?
I'm trying to pull it up.
Thank you very much. I'm going to be brief because I know you have a very packed schedule today and I really appreciate being able to fit in. Quick background, we applied for and received a CPC grant in 2023 to plant trees in both Rosedale Main Cemetery and also the Little Cemetery. And it was a grant of $28,000. So in 2023, we actually planted 10 new trees in Rosedale. We did a lot of cleanup of invasives and so forth in Rosedale Extension. And when 2024 came along, we started looking at Rosedale Extension. We recognized that because there are so few trees there, I believe it's our newest cemetery, we wanted to step back. I think we had an opportunity to do something special as opposed to, you know, let's put a tree here, here, and here. And so I actually asked the CPC if we could have an extra year. And so in the past year, we have done just that. We have taken a complete tree inventory. We have assessed the health of the existing trees. And we have come up with a design with the help of Lolly Gibson, who is a professional landscape architect. So my first thank you is to Lolly. I'm not sure if she's on Zoom or not, but this is her plan. And we had four goals for this plan. The first was when we plant trees, we obviously want to make the cemetery look beautiful. That seems to be, that's what you're blessing, I guess. We also needed to remove some high-risk dangerous trees. There are a number of Norway maples that are in there, especially along the borders that are, I mean, I wouldn't even want to walk under them. They're in such poor shape. And then finally, if you might be aware, the new, it's not that new, but the idea of planting native plantings in order to improve our ecosystem, support wildlife, support insects and birds and so on, has become very top of mind for anybody planting today, whether it's planting flowers or trees or working in agriculture or whatever. So that was one of the things that we thought that we would do is we would only plant native trees. And so when we specified, and these are some of the trees, there, I think we're, we have 10 or 11 different species that we've chosen for Rosedale so far. And they're all native. We try not even to cultivate them. So we're somewhat purist. And if you look at the second page of your little handout here, you can see the native habitat value of each of these trees. Some of them are nesting. This is for nesting. They're pollinators. There's a lot of benefits. It also improves the soil. They sequester more carbon. Native trees are good. So one of the goals of this project was to use this as a showcase, to educate people in town. If you're going to plant trees on your property, maybe you should think about a jaguar hickory or something that maybe you've never heard of before. There's some beautiful trees and this is going to allow them to come in and actually see what these trees look like. The stretch goal for this, once we get up to at least 25 unique species, is to be certified as an arboretum. So that's down the road, maybe another year or two, but that is definitely, you know, behind this is that I think it would be really great for the town of Manchester to have one of our cemeteries be certified and we would have signs on the trees and so forth. And we'd have to work that out with, obviously the DPW would get permission to do that, but that's a stretch goal. When is this going to happen? Next month. We're going to plant 39 new native trees. Removing about eight to 10 unhealthy trees. We'll be doing some dead, some dead wood pruning. There's some actually beautiful sugar maples over by the high school that could definitely benefit from some pruning and they are native, so we're saving those. We're going to be testing and amending the soil as needed. And we're also going to install a temporary drip system. So the first two or three years after trees are planted, it's very important to be able to water them, give them supplemental watering if we have a drought, which seems to happen every year, other years. We want to make sure that these trees live. And who's going to do this? First of all, I wanted to thank also the DPW because Chuck had asked me to make a presentation because when I, I think I told him all the work he was going to do, that we were going to do, it was like, maybe you shouldn't have everybody understand what's happening before we move forward here. We get permission from the DPW and they're extremely helpful for us. Where can we plant in the cemetery? Sean is great and he knows that he spends time walking around the cemetery, making sure that we plant them in the right place. The Friends of, so the Friends of Manchester Trees is going to be doing all the planting and watering. And that will be paid for completely by the CPC grant and by funds from our nonprofit. So my second thank you, if there's anybody on Zoom, I thank our members and our donors for supporting this project. And this is just going to be a very fun thing to see come to fruition. Thank you to Jack Burke. I think he might be on the line for the grant. And in front of you, if you've got this plan, if anybody has any questions, that's pretty much the end of the story. Any questions?
I've got one for Chuck. This is not going to interfere with any future human plantings.
So yeah, I think there's a couple of locations where we just need to verify that there's nothing going on. So there's a couple on the plan that I think we'll need to lightly move. So I think we can work with Jody on that one. The next one is some of the removals, like the invasive maples. I'm a little nervous that they might disturb somebody who's already planted there. So we're just going to have to take a closer look at that and get to the field. The only place that we can sell more, make more lots would be where the cemetery office is, which I do have plans to remove that and make that grave site. But that's still a few years ago, so I don't think that interferes with there's a cemetery office there. And then, yeah, the only other thing that we talked about in the cemetery master plan was potentially along the side where, you know, where the school would be if we did some sort of formation garden, formation burial plot. So this would prevent that probably would be in consideration. We have a really, out there.
No, I'm good. I'm looking forward to learning about trees, all of these trees that I didn't recognize the names of, about half of.
So I'm just, basically you're encouraging strolling through a cemetery.
By doing what?
Encouraging strolling through a cemetery.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Like whistling past the grid.
Absolutely. Well, you know, you look at, you look at the cemetery, what's the one in Cambridge that's so famous?
Mount Auburn.
Mount Auburn Cemetery is one of the first cemeteries that actually created an arboretum as part of the cemetery. And I mean, what better place, you know, when you go to visit a loved one's grave is to have some, you know, beautiful trees shading and being able to do that as a walking area. I also love the fact that it's right near the high school because I think it'd be a great place for, you know, kids in a biology class or botany, you know, if they're studying botany, to come and see this. Because this is a living example of how to, how to take a degraded site, which this was a gravel pit. And this will start to, you know, birds will start arriving and insects and all sorts of good things that we want. And so it'd be a great educational opportunity.
Question, are there plans to expand the number of plantings in the future, distant or near or?
I'm always looking for places.
I know you are.
Well, if you look at this plan, we have concentrated on the side where the high school is.
Sure.
But the side where the building is over here, and I had not, I was not aware of this idea of having a place for urns or whatever, but this would be a great area to actually, once this building comes down, is to plant with that in mind, wherever that would be.
Well, I think we were opening up grave lots is the idea.
Yep, there's, there's always opportunity.
I'm just curious, arboretum, there's a certain criteria you are to become, quote, an arboretum?
Yes, 20, so we would, we would go for the lowest level because we don't have paid help. We don't have all these things which you, which you would need. So there needs to be signs on the trees, like little plaques identifying them. You need to have at least one event there a year. So we would probably do a tree walk as part of the Friends of Trees and you need 25 unique species.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Chuck, you are the one who encouraged us to hear this. What went on with us?
One of the, in the back of my mind, we did work with Jody on Pleasant, at the Pleasant Grove Cemetery where we built out that new area. And there were some comments from the public that we went up in there. So I just wanted to make sure that this was a public, you know, place to see this. You know, not just us showing up with 39 trees.
Well, that's a good question. Do you have plans to communicate to the community prior to having the trees show up at the cemetery?
Absolutely, absolutely. And my background is marketing, so we're definitely going to get word out that we're doing this. Thank you, Kathy.
Don't we just agree that this is a subject that we can support as a consensus?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What I should have said, one of the things I should have said at the beginning, is that I have asked that we move the town meeting ahead of the DPW, of the DPW discussion because, because the moderator asked me to. The next item on the agenda is the hospital license for, that's the next.
For motion or you want to?
John, you'll sometimes have something to say.
Sometimes with regard to this, I looked at it. I've had drinks there. No, no questions.
From time to time, I have got questions about complaints from noise from the neighbors and then I've heard nothing.
Yeah, last couple of years, it's been better.
Yeah.
So whatever they're doing is working.
Yeah.
They should keep doing.
Yes, they should keep doing.
Yes, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. I move the select board approved the seasonal alcohol license for the Manchester Beth and Townes Club.
Second. Okay, ready for the question?
Yes.
John.
And yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy, yes, Brian.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Yes.
The Royal Housing Trust is unable to join us. So the next thing is the discussion of the annual calendar.
Sorry, classification. So they had sent us a memo. Are we going to be just putting it on the next meeting's agenda?
I found, I want to find out if the seventh or the 22nd is good for them.
Okay. Yep.
So the draft, the draft warrant is, contains 20, 20 articles. There's the pretty standard budgetary lines. Vocational school, Essex Tech, there's the obvious town operating, the town capital, the school operating and capital. The OPEB funding, the annual event. The funding for the revolving funds that Park and Rec has and that the Royal Health has as well. Those are all fairly, this, like I said, pretty standard that you see every year, not that the numbers are necessarily standard. The, the school remains a challenging factor here. The school committee will be meeting tomorrow evening to finalize their request. Currently, we have in, in the proposed budget, a school district appropriation increase of 7.29%. Tracked what they call their Model A, the projection. So we'll see if that is what they vote on tomorrow night. So with, with their number, assuming that that's the school number and with our operating budgets and capital requests, the, the bottom line for taxpayers currently is, is a 3.5% increase. So that's roughly a one and a half percent on the town side and then the two and a half plus on the school side to have that number. The, there are some additional, there's a few more items on the, on the town budget that you wanted to review. The proposed budget does have a couple of, has one new full-time position as, as part of the move to a finance director model. And it also has a boost in the assistant to the town clerk from a half-time position to a full-time position. And then the third staffing change that's in the proposed budget that the finance committee has approved has a new deputy fire chief starting in the fourth quarter. So now, so waiting until the fourth quarter to start that full-time, but obviously then it would hit as a full-time position in FY '27. So I know that you wanted to spend a little time on those, those staffing, potential staffing changes. And in addition, on the capital side, the, at one point you had endorsed going forward with a bond for the, for the senior center in anticipation of fundraising. Finance committee is, is not enamored by that idea. They would prefer to have the fundraising get started and then do a bond. So you, you talked a little bit about that, but you need a final decision, which, which direction you want to go with that as well. And then in addition to the bonding of the project, there has been discussions regarding funding for the architectural work, the design work for the addition. And is there an ability to put some monies towards that to help with finalizing the design and coming up with a plan that then can be presented to potential donors? So it would be helpful to have at least some dollars available for that. Again, in the discussions with the finance committee, we talked about, again, finance committee was not in favor of putting town money into that at this point. And we'd prefer to see that perhaps we, we secure some donated funds to jumpstart the architectural work as well. So again, you need to make a final decision as, on that as well. And then a potential new article would be to amend our existing water regulations where as it addresses drought conditions and your ability to impose restrictions for outdoor water use. The state is looking for communities to update their regulations to contain some of the language that they would like to see referencing state declarations. Right now, our bylaw focuses on you making the decisions. And the state would like to see some additional language that says when the state declares a drought, then you respond to that.
Okay, they're not looking for standards based on our resources, but on their declaration.
Correct, correct. And so Chuck, I was reviewing that earlier today and feel like it wouldn't be that hard to add a couple of paragraphs to our existing bylaw that would incorporate those desired changes from the state. We're under some pressure to do that. Chuck can explain that a little bit, and I can offhand.
So all of our, our water regulations are through Mass D E P. And in the most recent registration updates, we have to register our water source every 10 years with D E P for basically the quantity of water we're allowed to pump. And so having a registration is one step easier than having a permit. Permits would absolutely require us to have all of these types of things in place, no matter what, that would be a permit condition. They had, up until last year, not been able to condition our registrations. That's where we're at, is their condition of our registration to include their nomenclature. It is very, subjective to the state standards, nothing really to do with our local water supply system in terms of declaration.
So if I am understanding, we have to abide by the state definition or declaration of a drought, even if family pond and well are chock full and happy?
And like, just as like a, for example, right now, the, the, the condition that they gave us, we have to implement it by April of '25, so right now. It was pushed back and back and back because of COVID. But like last fall, we did declare a drought because, you know, things were going down, but the state had also declared the level three critical drought. In January, people started asking, hey, you know, we still have that restriction in place. That seems weird. You know, we've had a lot of rain, we've had a lot of snow. We said, yeah, but the state hasn't lifted yet. But they did. And then, you know, I sent a memo, I think to Greg, and you guys lifted them. A week later, they went right back into drought. So technically, based on that, we would have had to reinstitute the, institute that outdoor ban, which doesn't make a lot of logical sense, but that's what we're out of.
That's what I'm trying to just clarify, the practical application. So basically it takes away the local control. So that when the state declares a drought, even if our coppers are full, we have to enact some type of water ban based on the level of drought, regardless of our local inventory of that.
And the state would argue that their drought plan takes into more, takes into account more than just the water supply. They're just taking into account like red flag warnings and, you know, drush, brush, you know, overgrowth, you know, all the, you know, wildfire risk, all that kind of stuff. It's not really, you know, centered around your water supply necessarily. So that's, that's the differentiation, but in, is that in essence, yes.
Okay.
The state declaration is one size fits all.
Well, so they broke the state into regions at least, but not, not. So we're not at the same level necessarily as the Cape or, you know, Western Mass.
Right.
But we are in the same bin as Ipswich Basin and, you know, other basins that are on our source.
I actually saw in the paper that Rockford had instituted a ban, like.
It's like they re-instituted the, because of the, the level three that the state re-declared.
That was yesterday. It didn't include today's one.
I'm a little curious how we get, when is the warrant, is the warrant applicable?
We need to close the warrant by, like the 25th, 26th. So next week.
And we're looking at putting something on that we haven't seen at all.
Right, so we would have something to you by the first of next week, or end of this week, first of next. Like I say, it's a paragraph or two that would be added to our existing.
And what horrible thing happens to us if we don't do it?
And I hate to put it in jeopardy, our registration, because it is kind of grandfathered in from the eighties. I don't think they would get there. You know, we can say we're working on it. We can say that we're, you know, we, we have the ability to restrict based on your declaration anyway, but this is.
I guess, how did this come to our attention at this moment in time, I guess is my question. Since we know this was delayed as a result of COVID or whatever, what?
Yeah, there's been some litigation involved trying to push back on this.
There's 1E plus water suppliers that are in the middle of a process of appeals on those registrations. Those registrations were issued a year or two ago. We're part of that, but basically, you know, all our suppliers are saying, you can't restrict us because we have registration. This is a whole bunch of legal stuff from the eighties. But in the event that you do, like, you know, so we're, we're waiting for that process to play out, but we did not get a stay from the courts to do that. So there's a, again, there's a chance that we implement this by law.
Yeah, you were waiting for good news and didn't get it.
Yeah, we implement this by law and then they say the court agrees with us, but D E P, it was not options.
So I, my thought would be for you to have a special meeting sometime next week to approve the final version of the warrant. We'll, we'll know the school number. The finance committee will meet tomorrow night, Wednesday night with the school number and give their final recommendation. So if we could meet Wednesday or Thursday, it shouldn't take very long, but, but you need to do a final approval of the warrant.
I'm sorry, you're saying Wednesday or Thursday of next week or?
Yeah, so the 20th, 26th or 27th? But can't be pushed off to the 31st. Okay.
Really, yeah, we really need to get it to.
I can't do Wednesday. Or I could do Thursday.
Is this an evening meeting or early morning?
It's up to, up to all of you.
It would be easier for me if it were evening, but.
It's going to have to be evening for me.
No, I'm good at it.
Just the work and stuff.
Not sure, but I think so. You've got to warm it up, maybe.
Six and begun, how long is it, like a half hour, 20 minutes?
Yeah. I just, you need to confirm your position on the various articles, whether you're taking a position or waiting until the lower town meeting recently.
Yeah, can we start at six though, something earlier than six thirty?
I'm sorry.
Can we start earlier than six thirty?
Yeah, we can, we can do five here.
I don't know. I guess I'm asking the folks who work.
I can do, I can do, it's really just five o'clock.
Six, even six, right?
Five, compromise, five thirty.
Just looking Thursday, right?
I could do Thursday.
We're talking Thursday.
Thursday, five thirty?
Yeah.
I can do that. Thank you.
What's that date, March?
I think we should start at the beginning and go through the things that are, that have driven to my level of curiosity. One, two, three, three is the Essex Tech, the Essex Agricultural Technical. Not a lot of controversy.
Actually.
You got the budget, don't you?
I have, if you guys are interested. I have, if you guys are interested, I have budget books I can bring. If you want to see them, if you know.
Do you have, are they online?
I have actual books if you want them, but it's online too, but
So our number is down?
Yeah.
Our enrollment's down a little bit, but it's always fluid anyway, so.
If you can send us all a pointer to that online book.
I mean, I can give you a physical book if you want.
I don't need more. Somebody else might appreciate.
It'd be nice to be able to see it before the meeting too.
Yeah.
Right. So there's the operating budget, which and then the capital budget. My one area that's going, I think is going to be controversial is number 11, the checkpoint of under restoration.
On the capital?
On the capital. Line 11. This is because the CPC grant is not going to happen?
So we, we had hoped for two different grant sources. Seacoast, the Seaport Economic Council for a million, and also C Z M, coastal zone management, also for a million. The C Z M program was announced a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. And significantly less money being awarded. So we had 25 million this previous year, they're down to 5 million to award this current year. So asking for a fifth of that was, is not going to, wasn't going to fly. And we will still apply, but we're very skeptical of our chances. Because the priority is, is projects that are protecting proper, uh, people. Their focus is on measures that are protecting people from floods. And so we're not optimistic that the real time they will score high on their ranking. And so we have gone back to a Plan B, which seeks utilization of fund balance from the town, plus additional monies from CPC. Originally, we're asking for 300,000 from CPC, and now we're asking 500. And they have, they have approved that as a recommendation. And then now this 800,000 to, to be paired with the 500,000, plus still the $1 million grant.
And what have you been hearing that you feel is not well supported? Priorities?
Priorities, um, you know. Maybe this is something that we ought to put out for fundraising?
Fundraising, yeah.
The only thing with that is I think we're on borrowed time, I mean, in one storm.
That's, that's the problem.
I don't think we have time to, we don't have a year, I don't think, to be honest with you.
And we lucked up this winter, but we just don't want any of this big.
The fund balance, you had $800,000 lying around, we got that, put that there. I mean, that's a pretty big dent into our
So the, the target fund balance is 8% of total expenditures?
Is that now seven?
So now this, this, we had, we had an extra million to bring in order to get down to 8%.
Kind of fortuitous.
The finance committee supports this?
Yeah, they did approve of this amount.
I guess to Anne's point, I mean, this doesn't affect anything, any other projects moving forward, right?
I mean, no, but obviously, if, if you weren't spending 800,000 on this, there's plenty of other projects to spend.
Yeah, I know, but like
You can't argue that.
Things this year that
For example, would another $800,000 speed up if we had PFAS?
Not at this annual town meeting, but like, ask me again for a special town meeting in the fall, and I change my answer. We're still in the process of writing the reports and submitting them to D E P on that. Eventually, we will need 800,000, whether it's this town meeting or the next one. So it depends, like Greg's saying, depends on how you're counting it, what the timeline you're looking for. But we will need to spend 800,000 on PFAS, there's no doubt about it, but it would not accelerate our current plan.
Are we still applying to C Z M?
We will, yes.
And the application that you put in isn't the money, take it or leave it, that's it. They could reduce it to some other number.
Correct.
Not that that's probable, but they could throw 100,000 dollars.
They could, yes. We will probably ask for the 500,000 range.
Okay, so they don't think you're crazy?
Right, and hope for a couple hundred thousand.
Or something, so this number is up to 800? Okay. So a lot of money.
Obviously, we wouldn't, this is allocated, it isn't spent if we found another source.
If there's an angel out there that wants to come forward and, you know, things like that, absolutely.
It has taken us quite a while to get organized to start fundraising for the senior center, which we're anticipating. What's your feeling about the likelihood of having a parallel?
One's gonna take away from the others.
Yeah, I would have a concern about that.
I would, yeah.
We don't want to attract from the fundraising for the anybody have any other concerns in the
A question again, I'm sorry, what was number 21 for, the boat replacement? Which boat are we replacing?
So those are for the two the safe boat and the main operating boat, right? The main, the Eastern?
It's the, it's the small launch we're getting rid of, and we're getting rid of the 25 foot federal Coast Guard. And so the police are gonna pretty much have their boat in harbor master, fire department. We'll be operating two boats, getting rid of two boats that we
So we're getting rid of the small launch that we just bought?
Uh, not the, not small.
Eastern?
Yeah, Brian, you want to chip in? For the boat replacement? Maybe he stepped away.
I think he told me it was one of the Easters.
It was, it's the Eastern, and I thought it was the Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
So, all right, hey, let me shut off this other phone. Yeah, that's me. So the idea is that we would get rid of the small launch and move the Eastern into the backup launch position. They both can carry the same number of passengers legally. The Eastern has more functionality. The Eastern can still respond to shallow water events. It's newer, that doesn't really matter, but it would become the de facto backup launch and also serve other purposes for the town, which the backup launch cannot. We would sell the safe boat, and some of the two new boats would replace the safe boat and the backup launch.
So you get a, so the existing Eastern becomes the launch slash backup?
Yep.
And you get a new Eastern or equivalent?
Well, it would be, so the two new boats would be both metal sharks, both volumo, both brand new, a small, the smaller one would be, the 23 footer would be for the police department, for their purposes, their patrolling, their needs on the water. And then the other boat, the 26 footer, would be harbor department and fire department. Primarily harbor, obviously, but it would be fully equipped with all of the equipment that the fire department would need to perform EMS and your firefighting incidents.
So it'll have a pump on it?
Yep, yep, hard mopping.
Well, I'm confused about the police department boat. I guess I didn't realize each public safety department had its own boat.
Well, so we, all of the boats are public safety boats.
I understand.
That's what they're all, right. So the police department has been moving into a more appropriate and larger role on water for enforcement. And their mission is a little bit different than ours. And they've been using the, the safe boat primarily as their platform. So replacing that, how old is it now? Almost 20-year-old platform with a brand new one. And upgrading from an Eastern, which has been a primary platform for the Eastern, for the harbor departments since I took over. It never really served the harbor partners' needs adequately. This would bring us very much in line with all the other communities around us. All the other communities around us have, have these aluminum newer platforms for firefighting, EMS, and police.
So by the, by the way, Andy would be on that boat that would do law enforcement?
Yes.
Right now, with the new reforms, the harbor master himself doesn't have rest, oh, okay, so you'd be outfitted with a blue light to the post too?
Correct, so yeah, because I'm post-certified, I'll be able to, just pre-certified. So all, both posts that we get will both have blue lights and be multi-functional, so.
Kind of an emotional response, but the Eastern is a pretty friendly boat. Goes into really shallow water. I'm not the, the metal shark is, no. It seems too bad to give up the, the friendly appearance of the harbor in favor of something that looks a lot more martial.
I think though, I mean, having something we can fight fires on the water with is important. So that, that would be the function of one of these, at least. We, we don't have anything right now, right?
Well, you'd have to break up the Yeah, you'd have to break up the pump. If you notice, there's a small plastic box at the end of the dock. There's a, there's a monitor in there, they get to break that up, set it all up, and then go up and fight the fire. With the new boat setup, all they have to do is hop on the boat and go. There's a mon, the monitor is already built in on front, so, it's all up front. And it'll be, it'll be a lot more EMS friendly, because it'll be a lot more easy to work on patients subjects, and it's got cutouts, so you can pull people out of the water.
I guess I under, I appreciate the additional capabilities from a safety standpoint. What I'm not clear on is why we need two of them.
Well, so basically, we have two boats that we use constantly now, and we're trying to fill slots to cover the water. Think about it technically, we should probably be running from covering the harbor from at least seven in the morning till at least 11, 12 o'clock. And that's a big area to cover, so having the police offset us helps our people.
And we don't have the staff for that kind of coverage, even though we should.
That's what I'm saying, so there's the boats, but then there's the staffing. I mean, I don't, I'm not clear
So we're not, we're not adding boats.
Okay.
We're, we're swapping things. So we have the existing, we have the existing safe boat, the orange boat, right?
Right.
Which is not the greatest design in terms of friendliness. It's even less friendly than, than the sharks.
Right, so you want to, you want to upgrade that totally?
So we want to get rid of that. It's also an expensive boat to run, those are big motors. More horsepower than really we, we need. Brian and Andy, correct me when I go off the course here, but so we get rid of that, and we get a new one that replaces that.
Got it, I'm okay with that, it's the second one.
And then we get rid of the Eastern, or we, we shift the Eastern to become the, the second launch, and also a spare for busy harbor weekends.
I guess I'm just trying
And shallow water.
And shallow water.
So we're getting rid of two boats, and we're buying two boats.
No, 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 I understand, but I'm trying to understand the Eastern, why? So it's too old, is that, that what we're saying?
Well, it's, the Eastern really served the purpose that Ian touched on. It was approachable, it was something people were comfortable with it, and one person could operate it. Both of these new boats require just one person on board, but whether that's the right way to go or not, the, the safe boat really requires two to operate. So it's less staffing for these two boats. The, my sensibility of the Eastern when we started was an approach to make myself approachable, and I think that we've reached a point in the harbor now where we don't need the Eastern, a specific type of boat, to let people know that we're approachable, that we're there to help, that people can come and talk to us. Now, I, I think that it's time to have vessels that serve any potential incident that comes up far more appropriately than the Eastern does, and with potentially less staffing.
I, I don't understand the less staffing on that part.
So the two new boats, the two new boats can be, they're open boats, walkarounds, so one person can safely operate them. As we know, with the safe boat, it is, it would be extremely difficult to go out and perform anything with just one person, because it's a closed cabin.
I understand getting rid of the safe boat, I understand replacing that with a shark that has a mounted pump.
Got it.
That, that all makes perfectly good sense, it's the second shark.
It's like, why do we need two of the same thing? For me, that, that's
Well, I don't think they're the same boat, I mean, same build, but not the same.
Two different platforms. So once, once
The second one is smaller?
Second one is actually smaller than the Eastern.
Just got more depth.
Yep.
So and then the smaller one's set up just for police, has everything they need on it.
Right.
And the second, and the second one, the bigger one, for us, we have a lot more capability. Pump up for boats sinking, you know, firefighting capability, EMS capability.
It still sounds though like the second one is the police boat. And we don't have the staffing to have that.
Well, we've always had a police
I'm sorry?
We've always had a police
Well, that's what I was asking, I didn't realize we had, like, how, how many hours of the police on the water during this, I'm asking.
So that safe boat is basically a police boat now, right, Brian?
I'm not asking about the safe boat. It was the other one, the small, the Eastern.
Well, that would be their new boat.
Todd, Chief Fitzgerald is on the line, there's one, he's got his hand up, he can, he can help here.
Thanks, Chief.
Go ahead, Todd. We're not, we're not hearing you.
So I'll keep skipping the square away. I would point out that these two vessels are purpose-built, built to the needs and specifications of the town of Manchester. You're never gonna get an Eastern or Parker or, you know, some off-the-shelf boat to really truly be exactly what the town needs. These boats are designed for what the waterfront does, for what the police do, for what EMS does, what fire does, what harbor departments
Can you hear me? No?
No, yeah.
Yeah, so thanks. From the middle of May till September-ish, maybe Labor Day or a little bit after, we, we currently staff we currently staff the harbor forty hours a week with one officer. On the weekends, we will backfill that with two, just because of the busyness and the type of boat. The safe boat has been, you know, obviously, we need two, two, two people to effectively run that boat. So with the purpose of this new boat, we could not backfill it on the weekends and just run with one officer. Since Andy is now post-certified, we would have actually two police officers out there. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
So I guess what I'm asking is, do we have a member of the Harbor Masters team and a member of the police department, both boats out on the water at all times during the high season? Like from nine AM to...
Not every day, no.
So what I'm getting at is, how much downtime do these boats have, right? The question is, why do you need two? I understand getting the one, which is professionally outfit for public safety, totally supportive. Unless you have the proper staffing to staff another, you know, group of people on the boat and want to do that for a significant number of hours, wouldn't that second boat experience a lot of downtime?
So the harbor staff is on duty essentially from eight AM till eight PM every single day. And sometimes that happens when, you know, obviously during the forty hours that the police are there, it's not always the same mission. And remember, the reason we have a second boat is because of the volume of traffic in the main harbor and the volume of traffic east of us. Graves, White, Black, Magnolia Beach, that created the demand for a second boat. That second boat came about because the Harbor Department was receiving lots of communication from folks up at that end of town saying, "You're not doing your job. You're not down here. Where are you?" When in fact, getting away from the main harbor was virtually impossible because of the volume of traffic. So that's why we have two boats. And the police, several places, they have their rollout there. They are the enforcement arm of the town of Manchester. And it doesn't matter if that's covered with water or not. It was mutually helpful to have the police out there.
I guess I would just recommend that if this goes forward, as is on the warrant, you need a, I agree with Ann. I think this is gonna get questioned. I think you need a very crisp story as to why we need these two boats. I'm not hearing it. I appreciate the one. It's the second one that I'm not... So I don't want to, I think we have other, we may have other things to discuss here.
They're fine-tuning the presentation.
Fine-tune the narrative here because I'm telling you, it's a little squishy.
Could I jump in?
It's a technical term.
Sure.
So just to kind of echo what Brian and Chief Fitzgerald have mentioned. You look at it from a response perspective. We've done numerous responses just in the past year in the water where we go out for either a medical or a medical and a police event at the same time. If we only have a single boat to do these three different functions, when we go out to take care of a person medically, then we don't have the avenue or ability to leave the scene. Or if we do leave the scene, now we're leaving the police either without a boat or the inability to continue what they're doing, investigations, et cetera. So it's fundamentally important to have two vessels to, you know, augment the functions that all the departments are doing.
And I guess the question we have is, why not keep the small launch? Keep the Easterner? Replace the safety boat with a shark that's fully loaded? And, and that should give you the same number of boats.
Yeah, so let us, let us, let staff work on that.
Also, does the shark, does the shark go into a shallow water as these?
That's why we would keep it as the backup launch and an auxiliary patrol boat because it would have that capacity. Use the second launch very, 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 very little. So to keep that vessel, which is good for one thing, rather than keep the Eastern, which is good for more than one thing, that just didn't make any sense to me.
That just sounded the opposite from what I expected you to say. It sounded like the Eastern was good in shallow water. And that's why we're keeping it around. These new boats are not great in shallow water. Unless I misunderstood.
Well, so the two new boats are both DP hulls, which are the kind of hulls you want for going out when there's the sea or it's rough, bad weather, that kind of thing. Need to go fast when there's waves. The Eastern, which many times I won't let staff take out under bad enough conditions. But yeah, I did, the Eastern is a shallow water response vessel. And it can also carry the same exact number of people as the backup launch, which is not a shallow response vessel. And so we, if, if we keep the second launch, then we don't need the Eastern.
Which wouldn't have...
We don't need an extra boat. We need two boats. It makes most sense to get rid of the safe boat and the backup launch. And then move the Eastern into a dual role. It will have more, it'll give us more options, more capability.
I think we've laid out the broad question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything else in capital that anyone else could think?
Yeah, yeah, Ann. I want to follow up on Greg's comment with regard to the senior center and the bond. And he wasn't addressing the bond so much as he was. Money's associated with some architectural work, and I don't know what that number is, twenty-five thousand? I think he had fifty thousand down there.
Yeah. I'd say maybe fifty.
That should be a good number.
Okay. Maybe it is. I don't know how far that gets you in architecture. Seems it would get you
Gonna seem mad.
Pretty far along.
It's good schematic, it's a good layout.
Right, right, right. But...
But there won't be, there won't be, there won't be construction done.
No, no, no. Not expecting that.
As long as you brought that up, I just wanted to get one more swing, one more bite at the apple. And feel the...
Swing away.
It's a, it's a show of good faith to the seniors that we are serious. And I asked them at one point to approve a budget for the schools, but we can't find the money for the senior. We've always treated them as second classes. Okay? No, no, let me, please. Okay. There is, I don't see the downside to approving, we're not gonna take the money right away. We're just gonna approve the money. Okay? And we can run concurrently. We talked about this earlier. People, they want to get in, right? And I think that by presenting, having this bond and running construction and fundraising concurrently, also, I'm surprised that the fundraiser didn't tell you that people want to see bricks and mortar going. And they want to see something more than, you know, pictures are great, but actual seeing construction really gets, gets fundraising going. It's, it's not unheard of. And I think that that we can save, we can probably, we could be in the ground, you know. I just think that it's, it's not a, I think it's not a bad idea.
Right. My thinking is just that there's some preliminary work that needs to be done. I know that there was a grant that was put out there that largely is being used by, I think, the money-raising group. Maybe not all of it, maybe some of it. But to create a story, you do need to have some show and tell. And I'm not talking bricks in the ground. I'm talking about graphics. This is something that it looks like. And they will go out and contact some, some major donors before this program ever gets off the ground. Whenever you're money-raising, you start money-raising and saying, "By the way, we're halfway there." And to get there, you have to have some sort of story to tell. These people are already primed, but you still need a little something to be able to say, "This is where we're going." And you need some money for some architectural support here. Further, the building is not just gonna be a seniors' building. The board of health is going in there.
It's town offices that were...
You know, the council on aging is going in there. There are town offices that are going in there. And that is part of the picture. And the seniors know that. Those are going in there. So the town, it's not just a seniors' building. It is also supporting in part the town's administration. And so I look at this as probably nodding your head toward that support as well. Obviously, it's gonna be a new line item on our budget next year. Well, maybe not next year, but in two years. Because there's operating costs. Maybe not a lot, but there's gonna be something with the building going on. But the building will be housing some town offices.
That's a fair assessment. My main point last week was, I just disagree with the statement that we haven't shown any love to the seniors. A million dollars.
Million bucks is a lot.
I'm sorry, that's a lot of love, okay? And we, the commitment we made to the taxpayers is that we would not spend taxpayer money on the renovations. Now, if we're gonna put town offices in there, that's a legitimate use of taxpayer money, and I'm okay with that. So I just think we have to be respectful and mindful of the commitment we made last year, which was not to spend tax dollars on the renovations. We made that commitment.
Well...
So I know, oh, I don't want to cut you off.
No, no, no.
So we've thrown a three million dollar number out there for this renovation, right? But is that just for the senior center or is that including the office?
That's everything.
That's everything.
That's everything. So I think we need to split that somewhere.
Right.
Because the seniors shouldn't be up against that whole part of it.
That's a fair comment.
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah.
You know, if it's, if it's, if it's a million for offices, you know, what, I don't even know. But if it's a million for offices and two million for the senior part of it, then...
So what's the approximate percentage of the square footage that the town will own? Approximately what percentage of square footage is dedicated to the senior centers versus the town offices?
It's a couple of offices, so it's fifteen percent.
Okay.
Plus, the other thing, and the function hall itself will be wired, correct?
Right. So again, when seniors have priority, but any time that they're not using it, it'll be available for board meetings and that sort of thing.
Legitimate town expenses. That's all I'm getting to. So if you put some boundaries around that, you know, again, I think this is about sharpening the narrative, okay? We made a commitment last year where we are meeting that commitment. We're not spending money over here. We have town offices to set up, wiring that will be used by boards and committees when they hold their meetings there. That's what this money is for. Totally, that's totally appropriate in my mind.
I think that the bottom line is probably a little bit soft. But the objective here is simply to get some money so that you've got some architectural drawings that you can build into your money-raising activity early as you can.
And that money is going to be spent on both the seniors and...
Understand, but there's at least a legitimate town taxpayer-funded activity that's going in there that justifies that. It was just the senior center that I think that's in.
So I'm with the fifty thousand. Do you think that's the right number? Okay.
A small amount like that, the two hundred thou.
Okay. Is it, would you, are you saying that we should put out a bond for fifty thousand? So that we can start spending it right away?
No.
That's just money.
I would tap a little bit more of the fund balance.
Okay, so we're...
Yeah, we should have that, right?
Eight hundred.
So is line, is this line thirteen that we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
So would we change that to fifty thousand and say fund balance?
Okay.
Fine. And, and at the fall town meeting, we can face again whether we should bond a part. We will know by then exactly what...
Yeah, I agree. That's the time for that.
Okay.
If it, if it happens.
I think we ought to, I think, Greg, you need to be prepared to, again, that the narrative has to be clear. But also, it would, is there any, when is this fundraising gonna get started? I think we need to...
This summer.
September, I think.
I think a timeline...
The advanced stuff is gonna happen in the summer, but the official launch, we've already got X.
That's what I'm saying. I think that narrative has to include the timeline.
Yes.
Okay.
It's been a year. Is there anything else in capital that we ought to talk about?
I'd like to circle back to operating if we could.
Sure.
Yeah.
Again, we have staff online. If you have questions, Jen is here as well. If you have questions about the staffing.
I have a general question. How'd you get the one and a half percent? When all these other numbers are going up so high and the operating only went up one and a half percent?
So, well, so that's the tax need. So there was some shifting of dollars. Right? So there's some additional, for example, a little higher number on the local receipts.
Okay.
Increased revenue?
I'm sorry?
You had increased revenue?
From receipts, local receipts.
Right. And some shifting from not putting as much into capital, into new money.
Right.
Capital, so some of that.
Oh, okay.
So the one point five is the tax increase. What is the increase in the budget, the operational budget? Last year it was like seven percent or something. What is the increase in the business budget?
Or just operation?
Operation budget, yeah.
Yeah. I'm at my fingertips, I should, but I don't. Do you have that, Andrea?
I do. It's five point six percent.
Yeah, thank you.
Better than seven. So I did, I'll start. I did a lot of pushing last week, like two weeks ago on the headcount. And just, I'm glad the staff is here. The reason I do that is because it's mostly administrative headcount. And I think we need to always challenge that very vigorously. I especially think we need to challenge it in times when the overall economy is, shall we stay challenging right now? You listen to the news and you hear, you know, are we gonna go into a recession or not? Those are not the times typically when adding administrative headcount is a good thing to do. I think, so just the big picture. You know, we tend to look at the budget line item by line item, line item by line item, because that's how we have to approve it. But I just ask that we step back and think about the repercussions if next year the housing prices don't go up, the assessments don't go up, and, you know, you're limited, so it's just...
It's not just prices or assessments that affect it. It's new construction.
New construction, whatever. The housing environment, if you're in a recession, that housing environment impacts, you know, what we can levy, right? So I just think we need to be careful about adding administrative. When it comes, so each staff member sent a, you know, a letter, et cetera. The, which one do you want to talk about first?
So we've got Jen and Andrea here. Why don't we talk about the whole move to the finance director and the accounting clerk, which would also serve the, would be a swing position for treasurer's office and assessing office as well.
I have treasurer accountable.
I guess on that particular role, I saw Andrea's, thank you Andrea for the memo. It was very detailed. My question is if, and I fundamentally agree that the finance area all needs to be in one place. Makes total sense. What I'm struggling with is the need to add an employee at a lower level to make that happen. I'm not understanding why we can't, in the near term, have some sort of a contract position to cover that need until things settle down, a new, you know, administrator gets to come in here and put his or her take on, on the staff. So that's my main question.
Okay, thank you. I have worked under a finance structure in the past. It is definitely streamlined. This ends, I mean, I don't attend these often, but there are a lot of discussions on money tonight, and it's very deep. This ends, I mean, I don't attend this often, but there are a lot of discussions on money tonight, and it's very detailed. I collect 28 cents in interest from this person, and I'm all about the details. There's a lot of, and you're absolutely right about the uncertainty of the future. All the reason to have really good finance controls. The extra person would be, Andrea's role will change drastically. It will definitely, you know, maybe a lot for the pressure position, and that's going to drop to her assistant. When I think about it, you know, the finance department, however, last year, when I agreed to take on those collections eight years ago, it was mooring and weightless. Now it's mooring, weightless, launch, dingy, slip, kayak, transient dock. I mean, it's a lot more work. Also, the budget, how much bigger is that than eight, 10 years ago when I decreased staffing levels in my office? So I feel like this might just be like I had made some good adjustments, streamlined, bringing Andrea on was, you know, fabulous. But the amount of work being run through the finance chain now is definitely up. And we have not increased any staffing levels in a long time. I wouldn't be opposed to saying it would be perfectly functionable to start with a part-time. And then, you know, if need be, depending on how the finance department rolls out, and ends up the role it plays, the things it fulfills for the new town administrator, whatever. It's easier to go from a part-time, you know, position to full-time than the other way, so.
Yeah, so I think, first of all, thank you very much for that. I didn't actually see scope, so you are referencing an increase in scope of work as part of the reason for this position. I didn't actually see that in the documentation, so I appreciate you mentioning that. That wasn't something we saw.
I think it was a little mentioned in the backside of the memo about more of the budget and financial planning responsibilities.
That's different, not increase in scope. So I understand, I still think we're just, going right to a full-time body and making that an employee is, I mean, it's not a small cost. It's a commitment, a long-term commitment, pension, everything that goes with it. And given the type of role that it is, finance here is the same as the finance in the next town, and the next town, and the next town. This is an opportunity to try a contract position. The other thing I would say is, as far as the structure goes, I would expect more, when it says here, you know, the finance director would take on more of the budget and financial planning, my expectation would be that that person would do the budget and FPNA role and submit that, those drafts to the town administrator. Right now, Greg, you do a lot of the FPNA work, okay? Because you did it a few weeks ago. Fincom meeting, when we were talking about the capital plan, the facilities plans. You did a spreadsheet, I'm sure working with Andrea, but you were laying it, you knew all the details. And you were intimately involved in the creating of that financial plan. That should be the finance director's job, right? I guess I'm asking, because it wasn't... This is a big role, and I didn't see the clarification and the accountability, responsibilities that I would have expected to see. And also, I didn't see anything mentioned on the automation. Finance department should be the most automated department in town hall.
There's a lot of automation in it, but I think there's a lot of in-person service.
Yeah.
And to your point about, you know, the administrative part-time, I'm partial to the employee. Nothing because, well, in my office, you need to be bonded, I have to give you the code to the door. I just feel like an employee is more vested than a part, you know, a contractual person. I don't plan on bonding a contractual person, a vendor, giving them the code to the door. I mean, they can come in and help us pose a circle position, but yeah, I feel like if it's a new structure, finance department reorganizing the way things run, and again, you're right, we don't know how it will go. I feel finance director is the appropriate person to handle the budget and everything. We don't know what the new person will want to do, or how much of the finance department is going to handle, but that is a good structure. And it would be streamlined, it would be, it would be great here because we kind of operate very closely to that model anyway. It's something that we've been in discussions in since, I don't know, six years ago, Greg came to us, department heads, and said, I'm looking for a way to restructure to streamline, and that was one I...
So yeah, and like I said, I don't disagree with the finance director model, but when you talk about streamlining, it usually means less headcount, not more. So that's what, you know, so that's what I'm trying to understand. I can support a part-time, you know, to start. I really think we need to give the new town administrator an opportunity to weigh in. He or she may have other ideas on how to do things, and rather not box them in. I just...
Andrea, please.
Thank you. I just want to talk about the finance director piece of it a little bit. Yes, I would like to take on more of that FPNA, as you put it. I don't have a lot of land with right now. Like Jen said, like a lot of our scope has changed. We have automated a lot, which is now, which is why we've been able to go so long without, you know, really feeling like a huge impact. You know, we've had grant increases, we've had the collections increase in Jen's office. I also feel like the, we just talked about restructuring and having less reporting to the town administrator. But also, we were talking about the, in the operational audit, which I think is very true, that each department's kind of solid. We do work very well together, the assessor, the traffic conductor and I. But having them, like, just have to report to the finance director's decision and make these financial decisions before it comes to the town administrator helps the town administrator role in that way. And I think it benefits all the community, the department heads as well. The other thing that would be is that I really need, and Jen also needs too, is our systems become, to move up. We can't be like the single point of contact and single point of different responsibilities for that. And then in order to do that, we really, in order to shift everything, we kind of need to have some kind of relief in a part-time or a full-time clerk in the office.
Yeah, and like I said, I'll say it for the third time, I don't have a problem with the finance director structure, per se. I just, I think you had a lot. That's just me.
What did the financial committee think about this?
They endorsed it as part of their recommendation.
For a full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they wouldn't.
So I've got a question. Andrea said a lot of the stuff has now got automated. Jennifer, you said you took over all of this water stuff. How much of that was automated? Yeah, the mooring?
I would not, it's far from automated. It's been on our list.
So that's running into a lot of people at the front desk, including me.
Yes.
Okay, and that really is a time.
There's only about 900 bills, I would say, out of the 25,000.
Okay. All right, so we've got to get things automated some way, so you've got some direct pay arrangement.
Oh, well, when I started, I think Cindy told me, when I started about 13 and a half, 13 and a half years ago, she said there were five people in that office, and her...
So it's gone down, okay.
So it has obviously automated a lot in order for two people to be doing what five used to do, yeah. There's a lot of automated process.
But still got a ways to go.
And I mean, I put in place, you know, it's definitely placed, you know, ways for auto pay, e-billing. These things have been in town for 10 years. I've tried to promote them, but I don't send out flyers constantly. It's costly for one, but there are options available and happen. When I see there are people, especially people who might live abroad most of the year, I do direct reach-outs to them, and I let them know about the product, and try and get them on board with the e-billing, the auto pays, things like that. And then there's a product action.
Yeah, 1%.
And what percentage of the residents?
I'd have to pull that report. It just goes up though, you know? When I started, there was 18 people paying online, and then it just, the pandemic helped drastically. Obviously, people had to put online, and now a lot of people are abroad. So there's a lot of shift to that. Using the e-billing and the auto pay, it's growing. I try and send out little friendly notes about it here and there, and picking these newsletters here and there, but just sort of talking to every person, telling them the benefits.
So Greg, one thing to think about though, from a service standpoint, and you have to tell me if this is allowed or not. When we have services that require labor, okay, are we allowed to add a fee to that for the collections? Because, you know, collecting a fee by a human being at the front window is more costly to the town than someone going online and...
Well, except that you're already paying me to be here and staff to do the work. And I hear a lot of complaints when people come up and want to use their car online, and they're not happy with the fee. They have to pay Visa for the platform that is providing the...
Right, that's what I'm saying. We're incentivizing the wrong behavior.
Yeah, it is.
So I was just asking if there was a way to tit-desk you.
So if you just put your bank in there, and there are some people that are reticent to do that. In fact, there are a lot of people that are.
Yes, exactly. I mean, online...
But then there's no fee, it's just automatic transfer.
A lot of people still like to pay in, it is just an ACH. It's not a, like when you do your online banking with your private bank, it sends a check, this is an ACH. Yeah, people, and of course, they don't want to pay the fees to Visa or Mastercard. You pay it when you go to a restaurant, but you don't see it. You pay it when you go to a store.
It was a different question I was asking. It was about paying the fee if they're physically here. I think, I think we need to, for future budgeting, I know you won't be here, but I think we need to look at the revenue side of this. We need to be incentivizing people to use the tools that are available, and we're incentivizing it backwards.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. Well, nevertheless, so that's been a driver for making you busier than you'd like to be, or that would normally be, right, in the office. Constantly having to take checks, and then there's a manual activity associated with all of that. Somebody's got to deal with that.
Not necessarily. I mean, you can have issues with your online downloads too. They drop people, they don't, you know, they have their hiccups for sure that can't be explained. Those can be very time-consuming to fix, particularly when they're done. You're trying to work with a third-party vendor who's having trouble identifying what happened with that transaction. And I go deep behind the scenes, and a few days later, I find the answer. But once you do it once, okay, now the next time it'll take half as long, and the time after that it'll take 10 minutes. So it's a learning process all around.
All right, so...
The annual part and the automated part has changed a lot.
Really, really big discussion.
I think we have said...
That's okay.
I would like actually a vote on this, asking the select board whether we endorse a full-time accounting clerk.
I would like to make one more comment on that.
Circle.
Okay. And, you know, I'll say, I endorse that, but I think we need to broaden the portfolio of the accountant clerk somehow to perhaps take in some of the personnel issues that was a factor that was brought up in the operations review. And I know there are some things on the personnel end of things with regard to benefits, et cetera, that kind of fall into the financial area.
I handle all payroll and benefits.
All right, well, maybe we can take some of that off you.
Would it be possible for this person to work in both the treasurer's and the accounting office?
Depending on what permissions they have for the software and other things. You cannot be collecting and then posting to the GL or...
Yeah, yeah.
It's a racing disease.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, absolutely.
I'm looking to add that to the description.
I mean, payroll and, you know, personnel and benefits, it's a lot, because the, there's 20% more full-time staff, probably, or staff in general than when I started 13 and a half years ago. The needs, the budget, everything just has grown. So having decreased staff at one point, you know, I'm a little bit maxed, but I'm handling it. A lot of the, what we hear too is, you know, what I consider HR function and payroll and benefits. So there's HR's policy and procedure and, you know, all that. And then payroll and benefits is your vendors, your insurance. If it's on your paycheck, it's me. If it's an FMLA issue, or a discipline issue, or harassment issue, none of that is in our offices already. It's already being handled by the chomolone or the HR.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
No.
No. Motion for what?
Move that the select board approves the addition of a accounting clerk, full-time.
Okay, yes.
There's a second. Okay, for the discussion, Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? No. Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Okay. And the other position?
So there's the assistant to the town clerk, which is currently a part-time position, a half-time, and the request is to go to that full-time position.
So this one here, I read Christine's memo, didn't really give me much, didn't really give me, you know, warm and fuzzies on that. So I went back and looked at the recording of the Fincom, where she went and did a full presentation and talked to Fincom about why she wanted to do that. I thought her story was compelling, because what she said basically was, it's about coverage of the office. She's constantly interrupted, and when she has to leave or gets interrupted, she can't get her job done, or, you know, a resident comes there and there's no one at the window. That is a direct benefit to the residents, so I am comfortable with that. However, I do think you need, somebody needs to look at the optional services that are in that office, because during her presentation to the Fincom, what she mentioned was, I keep getting interrupted. We had notary day, I think is what she said. There was one day when everybody was in there asking for things to be notarized. That is an optional service, it's not required by law. We probably have other optional services, and if we do, we should be charging for those to offset the cost of this increased staffing, okay? We don't have to have the taxpayer, you know, pay the entire load, okay? And we're not doing that. We need to start doing that. So I support the increased hours for the town clerk, but I would ask that we look at charging for the optional services to offset.
Right now, do we notarize for free?
Yes.
Yeah, and we should be charged.
We should be charged. And that's the only one that comes to my mind, because it's a great service, and I used it two times in the past six months. But we probably do other things that are optional, that we do it for free and suck it up, and the taxpayer pays for it. They don't really have to do that.
With that note, do we support the full-time clerk? I see mine. Okay, let's move on. What should we be looking at next?
So, thank you.
Ah, yes.
Yep, cheaply nearly as I wanted.
Hi, good evening. No, I've presented to you multiple times on this, as have previous chiefs. The workload, at least the administrative workload of the fire department, in addition to calls, is ever-increasing, especially with some of the construction going on, the increased needs of our residents, which is becoming more evident, the more interesting construction goes on. It has been time-consuming. In addition to being a, you know, 24/7, 365-day organization, it's very difficult to cover all those calls, especially on the open nights when additional staff is needed. So this person primarily role will be fire prevention, which will semi-be offset. We'll be presenting to you next month, or so once your schedule calms down a little bit, about increasing our fees, as well as increasing the fire permitting fee, which is currently, no one pays for our inspectional services when it comes to building permits. It's just rolled into the building permit fee. Separating those out based upon the complexity of these dwellings that we're beginning to see, and the time it takes to research laws and regulations with that. As well as coverage for me to give me a little bit of a break and not be going 24/7.
That's good. I think you got a lot of the challenges that town's clerk has, except that you have the problem 24/7. Hey, not so much, but you're public-facing and got a lot of stuff to do.
Yeah, you know, and the environment's changing. We just looked at the, you know, brush fires that we had this past fall. If you look at the forecast, looking for the spring is not looking much better, even though we just had two inches of rain. So I think things are going to get much worse before they get any better.
This person would be on the same, essentially the same schedule as you?
My goal would be to put them on, I do... I do eight to four Monday through Friday. This person would be on four 10-hour days, which would coincide with our shift work as well. So if we can utilize them in that capacity to optimize, you know, the finances of the fire department, we certainly will. You know, but obviously, there's going to be some flexibility in their hours based upon if on the way over a weekend and they're covering, things like that. But the goal would be to make the job enticing to people to take, and, you know, four 10-hour days would be a little bit better than the Monday to Friday to four.
One. Good.
So that wraps up the budget items. Obviously, the school is still outstanding. There are the various planning boards, proposed zoning amendments on them. There are... We can walk through... Mark is here to walk through them, if you'd like.
Okay. I think we probably got to do that.
Okay. So, Mark, do you want to just walk through the various...
There is a PowerPoint, but do you want to use it or...
Oh, the summary.
Yeah, if you'd like to. I'll go through it quickly.
Is that available to put on?
If not, I can run the full...
Yeah, it's just easier for people who are here and miss a word or two if we have... I'm sorry.
You can go ahead and start, Mark, now. We'll get this up.
Okay. So the planning board, we've been working on some zoning article changes, and we have seven. We submitted to your board last week, that we discussed in a previous meeting as well. The first article is for... I'll just run down them. Associate members. The planning board does not have an associate member. There's been a change to the state law as it pertains to accessory dwelling units. There's a right to be able to construct an accessory dwelling unit up to 900 square feet. So we have a bylaw that regulates that, as well as one for slightly larger accessory dwelling units. We also have a short-term rental prohibition that we have drafted for accessory dwelling units. We have a floodplain bylaw update that needs to be re-adopted. We have to expand the applicability of site plan review. Many things have fallen through the cracks. So it's just a more comprehensive list. And the introduction to the zoning bylaw, we're proposing to delete because it's more informational than regulatory. And so that is the list that I just ran through.
Okay.
Associate members is the one that's up next.
Yes.
So the... So for more detail, the associate members, right now, the planning board does not have an associate member to act when someone has to, is unavailable, or in conflict interest, or...
Or something carries over across an election and...
Yes, as last year, exactly. So there's many reasons why when an associate member might be useful to have. The planning board discussed this, and they decided that they would like to have two associate members appointed jointly with the Select Board, and that they would be for two-year terms. They would be staggered. If this passes, we would appoint one for one year, one for two years, and then someone every... It would be two-year terms thereafter.
Any questions?
So these people attend meetings when there are issues, where there are conflicts, or for whatever reason, somebody has to recuse themselves, or is sick, or I don't know.
Exactly.
Is not there.
Exactly. And then, you know, that person would...
Not exactly.
But not there all the time?
Well, no. So ideally, that person would attend all the planning boards.
That's my question. All right.
Okay. It would only be eligible to vote on special permits.
Right.
So if we didn't have anything as a special permit, then we necessarily have to be there. But I think just for continuity and for learning the job and really understanding all the other things the planning board does, it would be generally helpful for the planning... The associate member to be there for all the meetings.
Okay. So that's an expectation for the people that get appointed to this line?
That's correct.
Okay.
Questions? Other than that? Okay.
The next one is the...
I assume that we generally...
Yeah, no, the only... I was questioning, and I think I've resolved it, is an appointed person, appointed person who's going to potentially vote on something that an elected official would normally be voting on, right? There's a disconnect there. I know that we... When there's a vacancy, we appoint. That's how I kind of reconcile this, okay? But I was concerned a little bit about how much... How active this associate member would be, all right, given the fact they weren't elected to, and they're going to be active in consequence, acting as elected.
We have appointed people on the FinCom, right?
The government has highly appointed. And...
The only time the associate votes is when someone else has stepped down.
I wasn't altering on the ZBIF law. I understand the concept, and it makes perfect sense.
I thought this was essentially the coverage for special permits, to make sure they don't get delayed. Is it anything more than that?
If they get delayed, they are destructively approved.
Okay. Well, that's my understanding. Their purpose, their... Really, their only purpose is to make sure that special permits don't, you know, are efficiently adjudicated and not delayed because of an absence of an elected member.
That's their only role. Again, I can...
Yeah. But to your point, I mean, regular planning board members outside of this associate arrangement could resign or dis... Whatever. You could appoint a planning board member who would be a planning board member and then be voting anyway without even any associate member.
I'm good. I just had to reconcile.
Excellent. Okay, the next one that shows up on the screen is the regulation of state mandated ADUs.
That's correct. So it's... We need to comply with the state law. The state law overrides our existing accessory dwelling unit bylaw. There are things in there that we can't enforce, such as requirements for a special permit, having, you know, the owner live in one of the units, et cetera. So we would... This bylaw would comply with that. Also, obviously, there's a need to increase housing across the Commonwealth, which is why they passed this. And by having it, it kind of adds a bright... Hopefully, people are coming for permits and have it inspected and will ensure that they are safe units. And we want to ensure that we prohibit short-term rentals in ADU, and that's for, by definition, less than 30 days, less than a month. So our... The state law allows smaller ADUs, which is 900 square feet or less, or half of the main unit, whichever is smaller, by right. We would delete our existing ADU bylaw, which one of them talks about ADU employees and garages are accessory buildings in our other ADU bylaw. Those would be deleted. The standard ADU, we call them standard instead of protected, that's 900 square feet or less, and large would be up to 1,200 square feet. We felt there's some very large estates, maybe big outbuildings that could be an ADU. And we can require the large ones to be by special permit.
So there are two articles, one for standard ADUs and one for large ADUs.
Correct.
Which would be voted on separately.
Yes. And again, we prohibit short-term rentals. So our standard ADU bylaw would be consistent with the state law. Again, it has to be a self-contained housing unit. The size is half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling and 900 square feet, whichever is smaller, on the same lot, subject to the dimensional requirements of the district if you're going to add on to the building for that. It has to maintain a separate entrance, and it's by right, by state law, in any district where we allow single-family homes. So the only district we can prohibit it is in the LCD, because we do not allow single-family housing in the LCD. And so within a half a mile of the MBTA train station, you cannot require parking space for that unit. But outside, if we adopt this bylaw, we can require one parking space for the standard accessory dwelling unit. So the large dwelling units...
What would stop there?
Oh, yes.
I'm trying to...
Yes, I get it.
It's hard to remember everything at the end. Any questions on the standard ADU? Okay?
Okay. So back to the large one. Again, it has to be self-contained housing unit. It's half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 1,200 square feet, whichever is smaller. It has to be on the same lot as the principal dwelling, subject to all the dimensional requirements, maintaining the separate entrance. We would only allow it in certain districts, A, B, C, and E. We would not allow it in the districts that currently allows two families, which is the D districts, because those people can come in for a special permit for two families. And then it would be a special permit, so it's not by right. And so there are some extra special permit requirements. They have to comply... They have to be either in the main building or an accessory building. If they're constructing a new accessory building after the date of town meeting, that accessory building needs to comply with the primary building setbacks, because these are large units. But if you have something pre-existing, that's okay. The ADUs are not... So you can only have... You can't have a large ADU if you have a standard-sized ADU. We have one. You have to comply with our parking, regular parking requirement, so you don't get the pass on not having a parking space. And they're only allowed on lots with single-family dwellings. So can't have a standard and a large, so...
Any questions on large ADUs?
I have one question. Well, actually, two.
Have three.
Sorry.
They're small.
So we have to allow large ADUs by right also?
No, we don't. We do not have to allow anything over the 900 square.
And then my second question is, I know we were talking about curb cuts.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're going to require the amount of parking, what happens if that property requires a second curb cut to achieve that?
So what is... We say in here you can only use one curb cut, that you have to continue to use the primary entrance to the property. I suppose you could relocate it and close off another if there's a better entrance because of your second. Even if you have a bigger side yard that you want, you have four cars instead of the two that only fit on this side.
Right.
You know, that's something to do, but the property still would only have one.
Thank you.
Was that three?
No, I only... It was only two.
Okay.
I only bought two.
All right. If you have a large ADU, you can't have a small and vice versa, correct?
Yes.
Do these rules say that? I think?
Yes.
Okay. Just wasn't sure. And large ADUs can be part of the main home?
Yes.
Okay. Was there some reason that they could not be, or just because of size? Some people would say that's there, but it doesn't necessarily have to be there. They can do whatever they want. Okay.
Okay. Kathy?
First of all, I'm glad the planning board lowered the square footage from 1,500 to 1,200. That was going to be my sticking point, so I'm glad they changed that. Question for Greg. So, you know, I like the fact that we're not going to allow short-term rentals for these ADUs, either type. They're operating under the premise that short-term rentals are for 30 days, but our bylaws don't define a short-term rental as 30 days. We haven't made those changes yet. Do we have to do anything to our general bylaws so that that 30-day ban is in effect? You know what I'm saying?
Right. So, no.
Okay.
So that the zoning will cover the ADUs.
Okay.
Everybody else is under the general bylaw of the others. Less sort of defined.
But we have to fix and have it fixed. Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Greg?
I'm going to do the comparison.
Here we have a little comparison chart.
That needs to be updated. Still says 1,500 square feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. This is just a summary.
Yep.
And this one is...
This is in case the other two don't get approved.
Yes.
We would still have a prohibition about ADUs.
Right.
So we would pass over this one if the other two got approved.
Got it.
Either one.
This bylaw... Yeah. Well, no. If the standard... The standard doesn't pass, they would pass over the large one as well as...
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Right. But if the standard passes, we would, again, we'd see what happens with the large, and we could pass over this one.
Yeah.
Because this defines ADUs with the same definition, which refers to the state law. It's also in the standard bylaw.
Okay.
Floodplain bylaw. Floodplain bylaw needs to be updated. It's been years since it was updated. The planning board had started talking about updating it about a year and a half ago, but then the MBTA kind of took up a lot of their time. So now we're under a deadline to pass this by July, so our meeting has to pass this in order for people to continue to get flood insurance. It updates definitions, some basic rules, but it refers to the real enforcement is building code or ordinance regulations, et cetera, within the floodplain district, so... And our version was just approved by the state, who asked to review and approve it, and then we have to submit it to FEMA after town meeting.
That doesn't sound like anything that we're going to be able to improve.
No. It's pretty much set in stone. Yes. We want people to be able to obtain flood insurance.
You got to do it.
Okay.
Yes. And if you want to look up the flood maps, they're online. So the introduction to the zoning bylaw. So we have a two-page introduction... Um, so the introduction to the zoning bylaw, um, so we have a two-page introduction to the zoning bylaw, which is more informative. It's not regulatory, doesn't set any rules. Uh, and some of those, um, uh, that information is inaccurate, so, um.
And having to, having to go to town meeting to change every time something else.
State law changing.
State law changing. Right. Much better to have the.
Less is more.
And so, so our plan is to take the, the information that's good and put it on the planning board website, so people can look it up and, and, uh, they feel it's informative. And then the, uh, the last one is the expand the F, X, club applicability. Yes.
Not worth.
Of site plan review. Um, currently, we have a very small, um, requirement. Yeah, for, for site plan review. Many things would fall through the cracks, so we kind of, uh, just thought, although we don't have a lot of applications for site plan review and a lot of big commercial developments and, uh, some modest-sized ones. Uh, the planning board thought it would be good to add, uh, some specific criteria, things that would kick it off, such as, like, if you're putting a drive-through facility, you know, if you want a drive-up window, or that can change traffic patterns within a place as well as entering and exit. Might not be building or adding more parking, which is why it might not kick in today. But, you know, that's just one example. So we have, uh, nine new criteria.
And we've all seen them. Anyone have questions on expanding the range of site plan? Okay.
And, um, I mean, we had this reviewed by council. Uh, we reviewed the version that I sent out to the board. The planning board met earlier today and approved, uh, some minor, uh, adjustments in some of the language based on council's opinion, so that's where we're at.
Hey, everybody's awake? Good.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
That, thank you. That was a very complete presentation.
Welcome.
You heard our commentary. What should we do next?
There's a hand up?
Oh, sure.
Not sure who that is.
Did you have your hand up? Unmute and let us know who you are, please.
Yeah, this says Manchester by the C3. I'm not sure who. Might be a by mistake.
Okay.
Uh, so that brings us, um, to the three citizen petition articles.
Right.
Um, one is, uh, the non-binding vote to ask the Board of Health to rescind the, um, it's called generational tobacco use prohibition. Those born after, oh, I said 2002, 2004, I think it is.
February 2004.
Yeah, 2004. Yeah. Uh, anyone born after 2004 would not be allowed to purchase tobacco. That's, so that is slated to take effect this April. Uh, as a new bylaw that the Board of Health passed. So this, uh, citizen petition article asks to rescind that, but as I say, it is, it is a non-binding article, um, based on the authority of the, of the Board of Health. So that's number one. A second one is, um, the prohibition of using, um, certain rodenticides. And you.
Yeah.
You know that well, so. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Okay. Yeah, um, we can't directly prohibit them in town. We have to get permission from the state. This, this is the first step. We go to the state and say, will you allow us to impose more protections, um, than are allowed to town? When the state gets around to voting on that, um, then we will, then I will come back with another citizen petition asking to actually do it, so.
This is just a request to go to the state.
This is a request to be permitted to do something, yeah.
Has there run other towns that have?
Yes.
May I?
Yeah, um, Brookline comes to mind, but there are, uh, maybe a dozen.
Rockport has it on there.
Rockport has it on, uh, and Rockport is working on banning them within town. Haven't made any effort to go to the Board of Health and see what we were actually using in town for rodenticide, but, um, yeah, they're, um, they're a move to ban them statewide, but, um, this, each town that moves toward it is more akin to a state plan.
So would this apply to commercial pest control people?
Only commercial pest control. These poisons are, these chemicals are not allowed to be used by homeowners.
Oh, so they're not in products you buy at the hardware store?
No, no. They're not in products that you buy at the hardware. Um, and the.
The third one is the proposal to, um, increase the fines, basically, on the noise ordinance. Um, but the state law dictates those fines. The maximum fine that we can charge is, is $300 per offense. The petition article sought $500 and up. Um, so my understanding is that there will be.
The, the, uh, person who put the petition together has asked that it be passed over. That's the warrant.
That's the warrant. That's the.
Okay. The next article is the PBW discussion, and we'll start with public restrooms.
So quick and easy update there. We have started reaching out to, uh, local businesses, thanks to Debbie. Um, we had a very positive conversation with the owner of Dunkin' Donuts, and we're going to, um, make their restroom available to the general public in lieu of water in Sewerville. Um, so that seemed like a, a pretty fair deal, and so we will pursue that and get a letter of agreement and get some signage and, uh, talk to the chamber about putting that on maps, that sort of thing. Uh, we'd love to have one or two more, so we'll continue to reach out to, uh, the business owners to see if we can get, uh, one, one or two more lined up.
Would you talk to Bravo?
Uh, we've been in touch with them.
Still trying.
Yeah. Certainly on the list.
Yeah.
So, I think, short and sweet.
That's a good, short one, but the other request was, I guess there's a bathroom here in Town Hall?
Yes.
Um, the conversation at the downtown improvement committee was it's the town's best-kept secret. So how do we improve signage or whatever?
Yeah, again, I think working with the chamber to get it on a, a map that people use.
But even in the, like, when you come in through the front door at Town Hall, it's not.
Yeah, we can get better signs on the, in the building, for sure.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't think I've ever seen a sign and didn't know it was there myself.
Maybe a sign on the door saying.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you could add that sign, I think that's, those are two good short-term solutions.
Yes. That we can do.
It kind of covers both ends of town, more or less.
Right, that's been the discussion, is you need it in both places.
There you go.
Actually, we talked about, I'm sorry, it was discussion about a long-term.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And with that, I know that, uh, we've been kicking around, having Mass's office having public restrooms, and by doing that, we could probably get entire grants or close to everything paid for. It kills two birds with one stone, so at this point, I'd like to, I guess there was a Harbor Masters Steering Committee a couple of years ago?
On, on that topic, yes. On that topic.
I'd like to talk about reconvening that. Right? And narrowing that down and trying to determine, you know, we know where you stand on the Harbor Masters office. Uh, and just stop really looking at that.
So just a question, clarification. Is that different than the Harbor management plan we asked another committee to do and different than the Harbor Advisory Committee? Right, two Harbor-related committees, and I'm just trying to understand the tie.
My understanding is that there was, there was one function, one function only.
Right, there was one.
The Harbor Masters office.
Yeah, so it's an ad hoc.
Seems like it could.
It's a task force.
Could be part of the Harbor Management Plan, but whatever it is, let's get it started.
Yeah, I, I would, I think it, we shouldn't do anything outside of that, so I like the idea of getting a task force and just getting it done. I would not want it completely separated from the Harbor Management Plan and all the other committees.
You can structure it in a way you want. I think there's time to revisit this in earnest.
Especially while there's money out there.
Yeah, when you say grant, uh, grant money to, in terms of examining where it should be and downstream of that?
Um, yeah, that, well, I have to talk to Byron. I, I know that, I know that they're dollars, well, there probably be some planning dollars.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, we have a steering committee, uh, for, for just the discussion of a Harbor Master Office, whether or not it would be feasible, where it would be feasible if it were, and what the recommendation would be to the select board. The select committee was far down the road to making a recommendation when we had the failure at Tux Point of the grant access to the floats, and that was a million-dollar project, so it was decided that that would take precedence over a Harbor Master Office. So this would just be reformulating that group and, uh, deciding how best to approach the select board with the idea of putting an office down there with public bathrooms.
So I, I'm looking back at our action item list, and it says that the Harbor Management Plan Task Force is going to be reviewing a draft plan with us on April 7th. So could your first action be to go check with them and see if they already had some thoughts? Just so we don't have two separate sets of ideas.
Sure.
And Gar Morris has his hand up.
Please unmute yourself and go ahead.
I'm Gar Morris on 11 Jersey Lane. Just a point of interest, the library, under the guidance of David Lumston, came in and said they were going to do some planning and architecture and said that bathrooms was on their list, and we suggested maybe, uh, that, uh, public access to those bathrooms, maybe even from outside, not through the library, might be a great idea. They said that sounds good to them, and I believe they said they were gonna, they were gonna pursue that.
Awesome.
Okay.
Great.
I would assume, when, when the library is open, I assume that you can walk in and use the bathroom?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, you can.
It's not accessible, it's not pending.
It's not a great bathroom, but yes.
But a lot of reading material.
It is.
Thank you, Gar.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else on public bathrooms? Forest Road Water Line.
So there's been discussions over the last couple of years about the, about that water line. It's, uh, in the town's position that it is a private line, it's serving half, half a dozen homes. You know, it's sort of evolved hodgepodge manner, it seems. Haven't really got the complete detailed history of it all, but, uh, you can tell it was just sort of added on and added on as, as homes were built. So certainly, uh, some of the residents would, would love to see a new, new town line put in. And that's, uh, so that's something we have budgeted yet. It, uh, like I said, it is a private line.
I have a good question. How many situations like this do we think we have in the town? Like, how many private roads or private water lines do we have? Is this the only one, or is it one of 20 or?
I think one on Jersey Lane that fits a similar profile. Those are the two off the top of my head.
At the other end of this line, just connected them as it all.
University land out on, off of somewhere.
Oh, university.
University, oh, University of Jersey.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, uh, trying to think of the other.
That, that's, one of my questions is, obviously, if we did something here, you'd have to do it for everybody who is in that. You can't play favorites, right? So the decision is, do we do it for everybody? And I'm just trying to understand how big everybody is.
Yeah.
The interesting, coolest point would be another interesting one. I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
That, that's why I feel I don't really have enough.
I think we can set it out a town line. That way or not?
I don't feel we have enough information to deliberate. I don't feel we have enough information to deliberate here because we can't play favorites.
Sure.
So I would want to know, how many of these situations do we have?
Yeah, how much is it going to cost?
And how much would we have to do it for everybody because we play favorite then?
Well, it could be done with a betterment, so that, yes, we pay upfront, but they pay for the whole line over time. That would be a reasonable way to handle.
Yeah, I could see that.
So then the town isn't paying.
It's like a sewer hookup, right? In that regard, towards the benefit cost.
Yeah, I thought the question was, does the town pay, period? Not, do we just pay upfront and have them reimburse? I didn't understand the question being asked.
Yeah, I had that misconception too, I guess. So if you thought it was as a betterment, it would probably be something to agree to that. But yes, that's a, that's a, that's a different animal.
Did I read that you would, if there was one concept of maybe sharing the cost with them?
Yes.
And I, I think that a hundred percent betterment, I mean, they knew what they were getting into when they moved out there.
Yeah, I mean, you're just opening up a can of worms. I have a, you know, you're going to come to my condo complex of our water line, you know, breaks on our private road. I mean, ooh, okay. I'll remember that boat.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was part of the option.
But yeah, betterment sounds.
It sounded better.
Is, is, has, have people been making noise about this recently? I mean, this is a topic a year ago.
Was it over a year? Was it a year?
It was a while back.
I've been talking about it for two years, off and on, and, and, you know, we're supplying water, we have meters there.
Yeah. Well, and we're going to be revisiting meters again real soon. That was, that was Lee. That was Lee Delacour. He, he came here and he was.
Becky was still here.
He was herding cats, as I recall. His.
Yeah, because he had different homeowners.
Fellow homeowners.
Well, well, the other thing mentioned, though, in, in the notes here, um, I think, Greg, you mentioned that when we redo the Bennett Street line, that that will help them anyway? Is that?
We, we certainly project that there will be some increase in pressure just as that line gets improved.
So that's the town, I mean, that's a town line.
When is that scheduled?
Two years. Not, it's not FY '26 or '27. '27 will be tapped, so it'll be '28.
What if they?
I mean, it'll be an incremental improvement. It's not going to solve, you know, that, that still may be an undersized line.
Yeah.
It will be an incremental improvement.
So what is the typical, um, timeframe that the home loan for the betterment, like, what period of performance is?
Usually it's a.
10 years?
10, 15, or 20-year betterment. That's, 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 people have the option to how long they want to stretch it out.
Do we ever put boundaries on that so we get our money back faster?
Um, yeah, you can, you can set the limit.
Okay. So maybe, maybe we could ask for the finance committee's recommendation? Just a thought. I don't know.
I mean, looking at the example here, what are there, 10 homes involved? I mean, look at your example here, what are there, 10 homes involved or something like that?
I'm not even sure it's 10.
I'm just doing the maths, a lot of money.
$100,000 a house, yeah.
Yeah. Why don't you pay it back to me in four years?
As I'm saying, as far as the period of performance, what's a reasonable? Would we want to get the finance committees?
Look other.
If we're, if we, if we were to agree to outlay, you know, six or $800,000, that's a big expense.
I understand the time value of the money there and all that.
I'm just saying they usually advise on financial matters, so.
So as we, as far as we know, maybe Lee is still commiserating with his neighbors or you don't know?
Oh, I haven't talked to him in months.
Been a while. He's probably Florida, he's in Florida half the time.
No, it's just.
Just pestering.
Would it make any difference in the cost if it went at the same time as Bennett Street?
Right, so typically we would try and add, make it an add alternate to the Bennett Street as the base bid. So the contractor, when they're bidding, would know, okay, we're doing Bennett, which is probably a three or four million dollar job. If we just add on this, you know, marginal piece of a water line on this side street, we're already there anyway, so we would get to see, you know, some economy of scale there. So that would be the best possible time for us to do it.
And that's, that's two to three years out.
One of the general conditions too, in the whole.
Correct, exactly, that's it. So it's all, it's all one mold.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of the best scenario, best case for us, the way construction prices are. Two or three years from now. More, maybe that much better.
So my feeling is that there's a consensus that offsetting the whole cost with a betterment is the preferred way to go. And that there's a benefit as to waiting until '28 on the Bennett Street.
Unless they make noise, we now are done.
It's a private line, they're welcome to.
They can do that, yeah.
If you have the new harbor master's office with a shower, they can shower down there.
That's not.
Well, safety to firefighters. Okay. Sidewalk, no maintenance. There were a lot of complaints after the particularly nasty storm and suggestion that adopt a bylaw that would require people shovel in front of their houses.
Not really a fan of this. I'm all right with, you know, if you want to put out there, hey, help out and do your sidewalk, but an actual bylaw? I don't know. I don't, I mean, we have elderly people here, what are they going to do? Have to hire somebody to shovel their sidewalk in front of their house? And then some people, the DPW's doing it, so they don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's true.
Do we get clarification on what, what it is that you do? Now?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, all of our storm response, you know, is typically mostly DPW personnel and then we have a few hired contractors depending on the storm. So, you know, this, this particular storm, you know, in, I think it was President's Day, or President's Day weekend, you know, it was kind of one of those, you know, kind of perfect storm. You know, essentially it was a longer duration storm. There was about seven, eight inches of heavy snow, followed by at least an inch or so more of rain.
Forage.
Basically had nowhere to go because of all the snow that had gone down before it. Also, you know, I look back at, you know, time sheets and our storm reports and, you know, we had several responses the prior two weeks. So even that Wednesday before this storm, we were doing off, off-hour storm removal downtown and, you know, sidewalks, you know, on the, on the main streets. So our general response is, you know, we, our guys show up, we, you know, start out with the sand and salt. Then when it starts to heavy snow, we'll, we'll start plowing. We kind of have, you know, team system, you know, but roads get the priority. You know, when we can, we will send our sidewalk equipment out during the storm. You know, hopefully more than once. But sometimes, I'll be honest, depending on the storm and, you know, the intensity fluctuates over the duration of the storm, you know, we might not get out to the sidewalks until the end of the storm. And so the map that we put out a few weeks ago before the storm was, you know, essentially, here's the main streets that will be there within 24 hours of the storm ending. Here's the ones that we also kind of feel like we're responsible for, but our response will be, you know, within 72 hours of the end of the storm. And then I did put the caveat on there, you know, depending on the storm intensity and duration, this might be out the window and of course the next storm, that's what happened. So, you know, it was unfortunate. I will say we were not alone, you know, there was front page news everywhere around the Commonwealth from Western Mass all the way to Eastern Mass. So I feel like, you know, in a typical New England winter, we haven't had any in the last couple of years, but in a typical New England winter, you know, we're going to get one of those a year where it's just nothing we can do is going to really help. I think that's where we were here. But we did, we did spend a lot of time and a lot of effort on, on the sidewalk.
So I, I just want to thank you guys because actually I've noticed a difference on Lower Pine Street. So it's been typical, the 12 years I've been here, only one side of the street gets done. This past year, I actually could see the tracks that somebody made a pass-through. So I appreciate that, it wasn't climbing on 10 inches of ice like I normally do. But I think there's still questions as to, you know, do you have the proper equipment so that when the sidewalks are cleared, you're in decent shape? I've never heard one complaint about the roads. I, I think, you know, team does an excellent job. You can see them out there pre-treating and everything, but I just wonder.
So, yeah, I know there's been a couple of comments about the equipment and whatnot. And the piece of equipment that we bought, I believe it was the 2019 annual town meeting, was your standard sidewalk tractor that has V plow and a snow blower attachment. That was replacing an identical piece of equipment that was retired because it was 20-plus years old. So that, it was basically a one-for-one replacement. We have a backup piece of equipment, but it's a, it's a wheeled machine, not a tractor, and so it's not as good of a solution. And if there's any downtime on the primary one, then we have that one as backup. And that other one has many different functions, you know, in the summertime and off, not, not including snow, which is the primary function of the primary piece of equipment. So it's, it's not ideal because you can't get a person, they're, they don't make a smaller piece of equipment that a person can fit. You know, obviously there's walk behinds, there's tractors that certain people have, but that's not what we're talking about. This is a piece of equipment that you can get in and drive. So that, that's, you know, there's nothing on the market that I'm aware of that would help us in that situation. And it was, like I said, it was a replacement for what we'd had for previous 20 years. So, you know, I think, I think we're where we should be. You know, there's always the, you know, for instance, you know, the guy will make the pass and then your contractor at your house comes by and blocks off the sidewalk that we just made the pass. And we just don't have the time or the ability to get back there and clear it again. You know, like I said, we'll try and usually, you know, the next daylight hours, you know, this was a daylight storm, plus the holiday on Monday, but we were back out sanding and salting because of the, you know, the rain and the freezing temperatures the next day. So there's really no opportunity for us to go back and clean up. So, you know, again, it was just kind of a one-off instance for that. But I don't know that there's anything, you know, based on our current staffing and our current contractor, you know, what we would be able to do all that differently except, you know, obviously.
I think that, the reason I think this came up, it was, came up during the budget discussion at a FinCom meeting. So the, I mean, the question was, do we have the right equipment? Do we have enough in the budget to, to clean the sidewalks to, you know, a little better, I guess?
So, you know, like I said, I don't, I don't think there's, you know, it's not a staffing issue, it's not an equipment issue that we can easily solve. So, you know, could we, could we throw more at it? Could we, you know, offer double time on, you know, sidewalk if you're, you know, doing something? Like maybe, but that's not really the way things operate. Yeah, I don't, I don't really have a better, better answer.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't think so.
You're fighting the environment, so what are you fighting?
You are, and, and that was a snow, rain, freeze.
Right.
You were in, you were in big trouble. That doesn't happen very often and when it does, it's very, very hard to deal.
So I, you know, I just kind of follow up with that and just say, you know, we're doing the best we can, we, we see the ice there, we see the, you know, snow bags there and we will remedy to solve that, but, you know, sometimes it just takes time and it takes sunlight and warm weather.
Have we ever, like, looked outside of here just for best practices? Just curious, like Minnesota or, you know, Canada, places that get real snow consistently, you know? I don't know if they have different equipment or different procedures, just curious.
Right, I can't honestly say that I've looked into, you know, the snow ops in Canada or Minnesota. But I will say, you know, we're talking about one storm event situation.
Well.
If it was happening every storm event, then I'd be definitely looking more.
Well, I, I just want to correct it. So in past years, that's why I complimented you on Lower Pine. Past years, Lower Pine has been a mess on one side consistently. And so this year it was better.
I'll take a comment and, you know, I'll keep a better eye on it maybe, but I would rather get the complaint in real time and fix it than, you know, I, I think, I think it's fixable without, you know, looking for an outside solution or, you know, hiring additional contractors. The problem really, you know, if you're looking outside for contractor help, you know, nobody's, nobody's buying the piece of equipment that we don't have just to use it for us once a year. Like, that's just not going to happen. So, you know, we're kind of at the mercy of what we have and what we can staff.
I think that we've lost sight of the discussion, which was a bylaw to shovel the sidewalks. And, you know, I think Chuck is, and the department has done the best job they can. Question is, are we going to find people to not clean the sidewalks? What are the most?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the map. And you got 24 hours, that's what you're going to clear and we all know pretty much what those 24-hour roads are. You've got blue, which is 72 hours. And then you have a number of selected streets which say property owner responsibility. And I say, I mean, it's Rosedale, it's fine. I mean, it's, it's, it's a few, just a few streets, not very many. They put in there, do those homeowners know they're supposed to do something? Because that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, probably not, or, or.
You know, and it's not that they're major, you know.
Exactly, yeah, that, so we're saying we're probably not going to get to it with our staffing and our.
Wind mire?
To the extent that it's going to get done, it's going to be the homeowner's responsibility, what we're saying there, but yeah, I, I take the point.
Uh, yeah, so that's there, but it's there primarily for informational purposes and probably not. I mean, you're focused on the red and the, the red and the blue here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I could have phrased it as not DPW responsibility, but, you know.
Well, we do have, and we have a lot of streets here where there aren't any houses.
Right.
But they go someplace. And of course, if you say, well, homeowner, you got to shovel. I mean, I lived in a community where you had to shovel in front of your walk, but that community was all built out by 1930. It's just house, house. Everything is defined, there was no section of sidewalk anywhere that did not have responsibility. And.
So, you know, I don't think it needs to be so heavy-handed as bylaw maybe, but there definitely should be more communication around the fact that, you know, even, even I would say the ones that we do do, like I said, sometimes your contractor might come by after we're gone and walk off the sidewalk, that happened on a couple of these storms.
All right, yeah.
And, you know, we're not out there finding contractors or, you know, anything like that, but, you know, maybe some public notification and outreach on that for homeowners to tell their contractors and for, you know, to the extent that they're already hiring somebody, maybe they should include the sidewalk in front of their house, you know, especially if it's outside of our kind of core area. But education's not a bad thing, I just don't think it's something that's, you know, ever been highly needed, yeah.
So I guess the question, I didn't even realize how far away from the downtown you do. Wow, I, I have heard that Ocean Street, I'm sorry, Summer Street, are there sidewalks on Ocean Street too near the beaches or is it just Summer Street?
Only, only a short section between Coral Island and Black Beach.
Okay. So I guess the question I would ask is, do we feel that DPW has the right scope? Are we asking them to do more than we should? I don't know. Like I said, I've never lived in a community where the town removed the snow. Every place I've ever lived, it was a property owner's responsibility, so this is new to me. I mean, there's a lot of blue here. And, you know, if, if you didn't have to do the blue, could you make passes around the red more often?
Right, well, we're not getting to those until after the storm. And we, you know, if, like I said, if, if we do notice like a spot that either plowed in or, you know, there was some other circumstance why we missed it, you know, we'll go back. But, you know, it's kind of the rule of thumb. And maybe, you know, there's plenty of times where we get complaints, you know, you missed my sidewalk and, you know, stuff happens, go back. I shouldn't say my sidewalk, they say, we missed the town's portion of the sidewalk.
I don't sense strong enthusiasm for a bylaw. Maybe.
I think you're right.
Maybe we could encourage Tiffany or, or maybe even, you know, after a bad storm, a reverse 911, asking people to please clean up, help clean up.
I got a question, John. I guess you're shoveling out in front of your street?
No, I don't even have a sidewalk on my street. There, there, there's a small, small stretch of about 20 to 30 yards.
The next one over. So there, I mean, there's a lot of black, on this map, there's, there's certainly quite a few sidewalks which are delineated as property owner responsibility.
Right.
And to your point, do they even know that? I, I think we're not, I'm certainly not ready to enact a bylaw because I don't think the homeowners that live on those streets understand it's their responsibility necessarily to remove the snow. We ought to probably, to your point, communicate that, you know?
I can tell you on my street, there's a large stretch of sidewalk that's owned by a trust that's out of state. So there's no way these people are going to do it. There's no building there, it's just woods.
See, if there's no building, nobody's doing anything.
Right. But that's still a large, it's like half my street.
Okay, that's not an uncommon street in this town.
Right, so who's going to do it?
You want to.
I do enough storm removal, I don't need any.
You know, it's, but we're into March here. I, my feeling is, is that I don't need to worry about this too much now, but I think it's appropriate next December when the storm, you know, once winter kicks in, there should be some sort of a note, this is something Tiffany can kind of help put together to say, this is what's going on with sidewalk plows, there's a map here and here are maybe some suggested resident responsibilities with this black.
So, yeah, I made that map and it was kind of introduced with kind of a, you know, reminder about the blue lights and what that means in terms of.
Okay.
Parking and non-parking, stuff like that.
I, I think it needs to be at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I think it would be something that we need to do annually and then, you know, maybe there's some more work that goes into it in the fall.
Do we want to put that on our action list?
Yes.
So we don't forget?
Does it go that far down?
It can. And that way, I think it's a good timing and if there's anything we do want to do.
Friendship tree lighting time.
Yeah, maybe, maybe put it in for October.
Yeah.
Oh, that's soon, okay.
Yeah, just, just.
We could use the Fall Town Meeting as an opportunity to communicate.
Oh, that's a good time.
You know, so if you do.
In November.
No, just the, the, whatever we're going to do, you know, not a bylaw or anything. I'm just saying, if there's communications that we want to get out to residents, having that communication available at, you know, Fall Town Meeting. A handout, you know, something like that would be, you know.
You can give the text, like when I get the alert, the blue light special.
Yeah.
You know, when that text comes out, okay? Maybe another, maybe a second text shortly after. We have the, we, we have the technology now.
We do, yes, we do. Central Street Crosswalk communication.
So this is relationship to Crosswalk here.
Yep.
And versus moving it west from Central. If it was in that location, a little further, further down, challenges the lack of ADA accessibility for the curb. So Chuck, you can talk a bit.
There was a crossing there, seemed redundant to the one that, you know, is across here. This one here is more ADA compliant, although it's not totally compliant. This one here is more ADA compliant, although it's not totally compliant, but at least has the curb breaks and the ramps. The one further up, I literally witnessed a elderly person with a walker that couldn't get her walker over the curb at that crossing. And so when that was repaved, I decided we're not putting the crosswalk back until we can make it ADA compliant. Uh, so when I was talking great about this, I was thinking that, um, you know, we are, I, I believe that we have additional capital in for Pleasant Street for that paving job, which will make all of those crossings ADA and include all that. Um, I'd like to see where those bids come in, will be out to bid in the next couple of weeks. And, you know, this is all part of the road maintenance line anyway. Uh, so assuming there's enough money to make that further up ADA compliant, then I'll do it at that time as, you know, do it the right way. But I, I hate to just paint it for the sake of painting it, um, without.
Talking about the one in front of Morse Court.
Right.
The reasons all of us use that is because it has much safer sightlines.
Right. Um, so, you know, it, it is better, I think, that moving the parking away from the crossing here will also make that better in terms of sightlines.
It helps, but it's because of the curve of Central that.
Yeah, I don't dispute that.
It's just really dangerous crossing that area.
You know, typical mid-block crossings are less safe. Um, you know, you'd want it at stop signs and more prominent intersections. So, you know, that's just kind of standard, but, you know, it's case by case. But I think that, you know, it's perfectly reasonable to put a crossing there, but I would rather make it an ADA accessible one.
So what would the timing of that be?
Uh, well, I think we'll be doing Pleasant Street in May. Um, so potentially when, and it'll be, it'll be one contract, but typically, the people that win these contracts are subcontractors doing the sidewalk and curbing and all that. So, you know, they'll be doing Pleasant Street first when it comes to doing sidewalk and curving. Uh, and then I could potentially add that section, uh, as a, you know, as soon as that subcontractor is done on Pleasant Street, they come down and do that, you know, something along those lines. So, you know, potentially we could have it done May, June, September.
So spring would be ideal. That'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, we're not getting out there, you know, before they mobilize the Pleasant Street boys yet.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. And it's not just the sightlines, the curve of the road, it's the way the sun hits or where, where blinds the drivers, all this stuff. You learn it when you walk it multiple times a day. Um, and, you know, I j-walk a cross right at Morse.
So I don't want to make, I don't want to make too much work for myself, however, uh, just further up at the Pine Street intersection. That, that's been a, you know, dips touch point for several years, so.
Oh, that road.
Nothing I'm gonna be doing. I'm not offering to do that, anything nearby.
No.
Famous road.
I'm just saying, like, that's another area where the crossings are not ideal, and a bigger correct solution is better than painted.
No one is requesting any crosswalks there.
Well, they are requesting them, but they.
So who, who is that?
We get people quite a bit there.
Oh, God.
Some different street people.
Well, I mean, mostly it's for crossing Pine Street, like across to the gas station, but like that's a very unsafe crossing.
It's very unsafe there, yeah.
The, now I just want to, I'm confused. Are we still going to eliminate the crosswalk at the corner by Bluebird?
In front of Seaside One.
Seaside One.
That's a different question, by the way.
I, we talked about eliminating that regardless of what we're gonna do up the street on Central. Because we already have one crosswalk in front of, uh, we ought to get the crosswalk on the other side of the entrance into the, uh.
Right. So, I mean, the, the timing for that to get done will be when we do the Central Street. Like, I could not paint it.
In the Culver Street.
Yeah, the Culver.
Culver project, yeah.
So, like, I'm not gonna fix the curbing or do anything with the curbing until we do that project. Which hopefully will be within the next two years. Uh, you know, hopefully we start it this year and finishes in two years. But the, the idea is, you know, I'm not gonna be able to make actual geometrical changes to that or, you know, remove the ADA ramps. Like, I'm not doing any of that. So it's either leave it as it currently stands and just accept two or remove it all, you know, by remove it, I mean, I'm not gonna paint it, so it's not the ideal crossing, but it's, you know, still technically there.
Would it be possible to improve the signage there? Maybe.
For?
For the cross, for the existing crosswalk, just.
At the Culver.
At the Culver, just.
Unfortunately, it's historic district and I get in trouble when I put flashy lights or anything like that.
Okay, so we kill kids instead of having.
Well, it looks good, yeah.
Heart of a charm.
Well, I, I did, I did notice that, um, the police already put some of the safety sticks.
They put some, some barriers cones.
Well, no, the, the, the parking sticks.
That was for the hydrant, I think.
For the hydrants, they're.
Because it's illegal to park there.
So, yeah, like I said, we, we will paint the cross, or the.
Parking.
The, the parking stalls and all that. If, if I do or do not paint the crossing as it currently stands, you know, but I can go either way on that.
I'm sorry, what's the timeframe for painting the parking?
We took it out in April, May, June.
Okay, so the spring, the spring we want painted.
Yeah, town hall, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But individual parking spaces, like in front of Town Hall?
Right, we talked about that, yeah. So the more, more paint.
I'm trying to save the apartment out of Bluebird.
Well, then we're getting rid of that, but only after the Culver, I guess.
Okay, but they went away for two years until half the Culver work is done, okay. Oh, you were just talking about the loss of parking by, by the Blue.
I think it's losing one space there, correct? It's really right over the water.
If you have properly painted individual parking spaces, they may actually find more consistency, you know.
Right, so that's gonna be the double edged sword. Because in some instances, you know, there may be a time when they get six compact customers that are in their spots and they're right up on the current crosswalk. Uh, if we paint them, you know, they're probably only ever getting five. That's, that's kind of the trail.
But after the Culver's done, are we gonna maintain that sidewalk or are we gonna get rid of it?
The sidewalk is maintained, the crossing.
I mean, the crosswalk, excuse me.
So right now, you know, the way the current design is, was we were going to, um, we were slightly modifying the angle of the crossing, but we were ma, we were maintaining the crossing and making it ADA, or keeping it ADA. And so I, I don't think that resulted in a net loss in parking. It was just kind of enforcing what should have been always enforced. But if we, if we're saying that we don't want to maintain that crossing in the design, you know, I'll take a closer look at it, but that has not been part of the discussion to this point.
I thought that was.
I thought that was part of the discussion.
Yeah, you eliminate the one at Seaside.
Right.
Right.
Take the, not part of the discussion in terms of the Culver design. I know we talked about separate of the Culver.
We talked about eliminating one, because we already have another one 20 feet away.
You know, if, if we could leave the crosswalk in front of Seaside One, so people only used it when they were standing with Seaside One behind their back, the sightlines are fine, okay? It's when you're standing by the Realtor's, um, Realtor's office, Elm Street side, and you're trying to cross, it's, that's, that's when it's dangerous.
What about moving the walk up to the hydrant? Is that a safer spot?
I'm not sure what you mean.
You know where the hydrant is in front of the.
On the other side of the driveway.
On the other side of the driveway.
Uh, right, uh, not ideal because people coming out of Town Hall, making that right, you know, they're gonna look up.
Yeah, but.
And then they're gonna make the turn. It's, it's not ideal.
You've got the hydrant there, there's no car on the corner there. You can see everything that's going.
Man, I'm at the conflict of the car leaving Town Hall.
Yeah, leaving Town Hall. If you're gonna turn right, you would be crossing that sidewalk, but you've got, uh, that whole, or that crosswalk, but you've got quite a bit of space there because of the hydrant.
His point is people are looking left for incoming traffic.
Yes, that's correct. I, they, well, that's correct.
It's just not ideal. I, I mean.
I'm just trying to get away from the.
We can try to look at, but then you're, as you're crossing, on the other side, you're definitely interrupting the parking because there's multiple parking spots on the opposite side. So the problems aren't necessarily the hydrant in terms of parking, it's the.
The other problem is, is a lot of people are crossing from Elm Street, they're going back behind the Town Hall, and the sidewalk is next to Seaside One. It is not on the hydrant side. Just blue sky, spitball.
I mean, so if, if you're telling me we need to lose the crossing, then I will let you know if it turns into more parking or lesser, you know, that zero in terms of the Culver project. But I, I think we had already kind of skewed the crossing to maximize potential parking. Whether or not it resulted in an extra spot, I can't tell you, but, um, we, we were trying to maximize.
So maybe if we can let Chuck paint the lines for the parking this spring and kind of take another look and see what the.
So that, that exercise will be based on the existing crosswalk and not reconfigured.
Let's see what it looks like. But that includes adding, hopefully adding the crosswalk back at Morse Court.
Do you, do you have a plan of the reconfigured crosswalk or not?
Yeah, I do. So if you go on, uh, Town Hall side, we have a Central Street Culver, uh.
Yeah, I've looked through it a little bit.
But so there, there should be a set of design plans there. So the, the, so typically the traffic stuff is, you know, at the end, it's all the structural and, you know, geotech and all that stuff. But then you get to the end, you'll see the line painting.
Okay, good, I'll take a look.
Should be, should be there.
Okay.
Time mornings. Good one, my dream.
The next.
Yeah, I'm doing one.
Um, item is the assignment of mooring to Manchester Marine. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Summary?
Go for it.
Might as well.
Step into it, Tom.
So, um, a couple, a couple of factors here. The request from, from Manchester Mooring to, uh, put in Bow and Stern moorings was encouraged by, by the Harbor Department, um, primarily because it could take up less, you know, harbor real estate, if you will, by preventing swing and better defining the channel. So it created a wider channel, it created a better defined channel, and it took up less mooring space, more harbor space. So the HAC and, and the Harbor Department certainly felt that that was a positive, um, even, even if they had more, more moorings. Let's just put that aside for just a minute. And, and also as part of Manchester Marine's expansion, plan of their finger floats off, off the land, DEP also required them to put in, um, Bow and Stern on the moorings. Again, to create a, a better defined and wider channel and less congestion with additional boats coming out of the slips. Uh, that also went through a planning board, a site plan review that was approved, um, H, HAC had approved it, et cetera. So the, the bylaw, the harbor regulation, um, has a section on Bow and Stern. And that section, uh, identified Area One as the first area that Bow and Stern was going to be required for all mooring holders. And so as part of that effort, um, the bylaw was, was amended, I forget, four, four or five years ago? Maybe, something like that, um, to, to better organize the boats in the inner harbor. Very congested, a lot of swerve, no defined way to exit, go from the ramp out to the bridge and out. And so the regulation that was adopted at that time was to say, we could, everyone is to go to Bow and Stern in the inner harbor, and it was to add no new additional moorings. There'd be no net increase in the moorings because the goal was to improve navigation and, uh, avoid, uh, the congestion that was in the inner harbor. Um, as part of that bylaw, it also said that Bow and Stern could be considered in other areas, um, in, in the harbor on a case-by-case basis. But it had the language in there that said, um, that additional moorings would be prohibited as a result of converting to Bow and Stern. So from, from, uh, uh, reading of the, of the language that's in there, it would certainly indicate that Manchester Mooring should not have been allowed to.
Manchester Marine.
I'm sorry, Manchester Marine, thank you. Manchester Marine should not have been allowed to increase the number of, of moorings. So if they were going to Bow and Stern, they had 10, and doubling up, then they would have reduced to five doubles rather than 10 doubles. Now, talking to the HAC and, and the BIA, they, they feel that that was an oversight in the regulation that, that they did not intend to prohibit, um, adding new moorings in the rest of the harbor through Bow and Stern. In fact, their goal is to do just that. Over, over time, they feel that that is a way to, um, add capacity to the harbor by adding more Bow and Sterns and more efficient use of harbor space, and you can add more, more moorings over time. But that's not how the bylaw technically reads. The, the, uh, the permission to, to grant Manchester Marine those additional moorings did take place in spite of what the, what the regulations said.
So it wasn't understood at the time? Regulations.
When the regulations were put into place, the focus was on inner harbor. That was step one. There wasn't, they weren't thinking about the rest of the harbor, though they did add the language that if, if it's in the other areas. But there was inconsistency there, right? So it didn't match what their goal was. It focused on the inner harbor, saying we don't want to allow, it should have said prohibition in the Area One, in Area One. And that was what was not added. It should have been, it wasn't. So, ask forward, here we are today. The Manchester Marine has gotten their permit from the state, requiring the Bow and Stern. They've gotten their site plan review from the, from the planning board that showed the, the 20 moorings, not the 10. Um, HAC has reviewed it and approved it, and in fact, you reviewed it and, and were going along with that. No one was questioning it. It has come up just now that there's an inconsistency with the bylaw. And that, yes, technically, granting those extra 10 is in contradiction to what the bylaw currently says. So we need to do something, right? You need to make a, a, a decision here as to what you want to do. So if you want to allow it to continue with Manchester Mooring to have the 20 and not just the 10, you need to amend the bylaw. You need to correct what it says in Bow and Stern to, to say that's just for Area One, not for the other areas. So that's, that's an option. You can do that same thing, but say, Manchester Marine, you, you should not have gotten those extra 10 moorings. That's really for the public, the general public through the waitlist and not your ownership. You know, there's some issues there because they've already invested the money, they put in the tackle, they put in the floats, et cetera. So there's an issue there, but it's another option. You could correct the bylaw, but not allow the extra 10. A, a third option is to say, we, we want the IG's office to come in, Inspector General's office to come in to do a review of all the transactions anyways. We can add this to the list and have their guidance on this. I will say that they have reviewed the, in the past, the 10 additional moorings, and they didn't object to that. Now, I don't know how deep of a dive they did in our regulations when they said that that was okay. I, I just don't know that. So that's a third option. Fourth option is you can say, okay, we're in a bit of a pickle right now in terms of making commitments to people and their plans, and it's now almost April, so we allow the, the extra 10 to go forward this year with the caveat that you're gonna be revisiting all of this between now and the fall and make some determinations as how to go forward. So that, that is a potential fourth one that, that I've been talking to Jeff earlier, or earlier this afternoon. He said that might be a, a fourth option. I, I gave you three in my memo.
So, so is it fair to say, though, regardless of what option we choose, we need to fix the bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, that's, and it sounds like there's a few, three words or something we need to add in there.
Yes, I, I.
And that's it, just go do it.
Fully believe that long-term, you want to make sure that that bylaw gets amended to allow the possibility of adding more moorings through Bow and Stern conversions.
When did this, when, when did this bylaw get passed? Is this like five, six, seven years ago?
I want to say five plus or minus years ago, yes.
I think a driver for this was these floats. These floats were not there 10 years ago.
Which, I'm sorry, I don't know.
The flo, the, the, those floats.
In the harbor?
In, in the harbor, yes.
In the harbor.
They were not there, and when you had a bow stern mooring, all right, you put you had a bow stern mooring, and the boat was just there.
We had very few bow stern moorings.
Yes, there weren't any, but they started to get added, but then the floats were not there. And as soon as you put a float into the picture, people say, heck, I can put another boat on the other side of this.
No.
And I'm wondering if that just became kind of a driver for people to say, hey, maybe this makes sense, and I'm certain that, I mean, discussions with BION or whatever, and that's how things got to stand. No, you can't just do that.
Right.
But it facilitates a decision to say, hey, this might make sense. Otherwise, you've got two bow stern boats that are like, what, eight feet apart from each other?
Right.
Looks a little weird.
Yeah, that, that certainly.
Right.
It adds to the functionality.
That's right. But if you have a, if you have a, a float there, and so I can see where that got a lot of people kind of thinking that way, and then, I, I don't know, BION, you're, you're on the phone, would, would, would people come to you and say, I'm putting a mooring in here, I mean, I'm putting in a boat, I'd like to put a float here, can I put a boat on the other side of this?
So that is absolutely not, uh, the genesis of this. The genesis was bow and stern moorings inside the drawbridge to alleviate the horrible congestion and lack of access to the ramp, the town docks, to the inner harbor marine. And so we did that in Area One, and that's when that language was written. The, it was an error of omission, and the other language that's in that same exact part absolutely leaves the door, door open. That's why we have bow and stern moorings in Area Two of the Fishman Arm, in Area Three, in Area Four, basically everything on the north side of the channel. The addition of floats is only allowed with recreational boats if you partner with another existing mooring holder. So essentially, each of those floats represents two moorings that already existed in the harbor. So somebody who had a mooring could not put in a float, say, hey, buddy from Beverly or, or, you know, hey, let's buy another boat, that is 100% not how it works.
So there weren't any extra moorings necessarily that went in as a result of a float being put out there?
Correct.
No, no, it was...
Except in the case.
Another existing mooring holder already in this harbor.
Yeah.
That partnered with, and each side is a mooring. When the person on one side gets a, the mooring, it gets reassigned from the waitlist.
Right, so, so the exception to that, if I remember wrong, Ryan, but the exception to that was Manchester Marine, where they...
All commercial.
Right, those, those, those 10, those 10 commercial.
Although I have a difficult time conceiving of how you could have two moorings at a, on either side of a float, and in fact, those moorings existed on or about in that spot with no float when they've got, you know, 360-degree freedom to circle around. It seems to me that you've got a lot less space there.
They don't, the boats don't sway.
Unless you went bow and stern.
Yeah.
The, the only way you get 20 boats where you had 10 was to go bow and stern.
Bow, bow and stern.
Right.
It's, it's less, it's less space taken up in the harbor. Manchester, just use Manchester Marines and say the ones that are the big deal. Those 20 spots are taking up less space in this harbor than the 10 free swinging ones that were in that same part of the harbor.
That's the point I'm making. The floats promoted because you could have two boats in where there was just one with a, with, with just a single...
And that's it, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So it sounds like we have two separate issues here. One is, we need to update the bylaw, it sounds like, right? Second is, what do we do about the historical, oops.
Yes.
So two separate issues. Do we want to, you know, just take a show of hands, is, you know, are we okay with getting a bylaw update?
I would like to see, I would like to see how the bylaw works, because what, what concerns me is what BION has just almost said, that, that when you put in, I have a mooring, I put in a float. Does BION give me an extra mooring permit? So why does Manchester?
I just said, no.
Why does Manchester Marine get, have extra mooring permits?
Right, I just think there's two separate issues. What do we do about the situation? But I, I just wanted to make sure we agreed that we should change the bylaw to be clear.
Change the bylaw, clear it up.
Yeah.
Is that something?
We're too late to the season.
Well, I, well, that's what I was asking, is that something we can do at this next town meeting? It's a few, if it's a few words added to the bylaw, is that something we can fix quickly?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not going to affect...
Ask when Rick gets back, I don't know, but...
It's not going to affect the season.
It's actually not. This is... This is the harbor regulations. This is the harbor regulations. It's not a bylaw.
Not, okay, so it's not...
It's not something that has to go to town.
The general bylaw.
Yes, we have to go to town meeting.
Oh, okay, we're just, just the regulations. Got it, okay.
Yeah, this is your...
We don't have to go to town meeting and changes. Okay, that's why I was wondering if we're under a time constraint specifically, okay.
Well, there's a time constraint in that there's a season coming up.
Yes, yes, yes.
I don't think we're going to change anything now at this time.
Not that many boats in the water yet, depends how fast we can fix it.
So, so here's the problem, is that we approved this to happen, Manchester Marine went out and told all these people, yep, you're going to have a mooring this year. Now it's almost April. And we screwed up. This is what it comes down to. I don't, and I'm not saying that Manchester Marine should have 10. I'm not saying they should or shouldn't at this juncture today. What I am saying is that it's only fair, because we screwed up, to allow this one more year the way it is, and then figure this out. Figure out, figure out...
I agree.
I agree with that too, yeah.
I agree.
Figure out if they deserve 10 more or not. I'm not, I'm not, right now, I've heard a million things, okay? This has gone back and forth, and I don't feel I can make a decision today whether they should have 10 or not.
Correct.
But to be fair to people who they promised moorings to on ROK, I don't think this year we can go back on that.
I agree with that, I, I totally agree. I guess my question is, do, um, this, these are the temporary moorings, right, that we were talking about?
Yeah.
Provisional.
Provisional, thank you. Did they already give out all of them? I don't think they have.
No.
So the question is, if they haven't made any commitments for five of the moorings, let's say.
They've made commitments for five.
Right, so they made, so they still have five left to go.
Something like that, five or seven, it might be 12.
Then we have another problem.
I, I'm just asking a question, I'm not...
Because the other problem now is the wording of the, uh, the one-year waiting list.
Right, exactly.
Like if we, when we didn't put that into the bylaw.
Right.
There are five other people that want those moorings.
Yes.
Right.
Okay? And actually, they, they deserve them, because we didn't, we, again, we made another groups.
Yep.
But, right, but, so there's five other peo, I talked to one gentleman, and so there are people that want those moorings, but we can't promise them that mooring next year now, because we don't know what we're doing.
Right. We don't know what we're doing.
Correct.
We don't.
So they, they have to know this is...
They were always provisional.
This would only apply to this year, if that's...
And it may go beyond that, but we can't say that right now.
Yeah, it's a tough situation to do that.
So, and really, just by saying, hey, if you're on the waitlist, you can be considered by Manchester Marine, that's all we have to do. All of these people, I think, are there.
But I've looked at, I've looked at the Mets.
Yeah.
And I've looked at what we passed, and it doesn't say anything about anybody having to be on the waitlist for any, with the cut.
In the past, somehow that got in there.
I don't know where it got in, because...
We did have, we did have that conversation, we did have.
We did have the conversation about, you know, making sure people were on the waitlist for a year, but did we not take a vote? Is that what you're saying?
We never amended.
I don't think we voted anything.
Okay, yeah. So we had a discussion, but we didn't actually vote a change. Got it, okay, yeah, that's my recollection. So those people can have those moorings, all 10 will be filled for this year, but the, every, every one of those...
Well, we don't know that, but a lot of them will make...
Assume they will, they'll, they'll get filled.
Possibly, yeah.
But every one of those 10 people need to understand, this is a one-year thing, it could, you could have...
We have no idea what the future is.
We have no, right. Is that where we're at?
Send us another note if you have anything.
We have an invoice for those things.
Is that where we're at? And, and we still need to, we still need to clarify the...
Yes.
The regulation, whatever the right word is. Is that something that we can do fairly quickly?
Yeah, you actually need it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, just, just one more thing on this topic. The, I, you mentioned the transactions and, and audit, financial audit. I spoke with both Mr. Starkey and with BION this past week, because when I saw the issue outlined in writing, it, the light finally dawned as to what the discrepancy was. I went back and looked at the bylaw, the, the actual bylaw, Section Seven Harbor Master bylaw, and it, it says we have to, you know, publish post lists of all mooring permits, including mooring number stickers. So there's like three or four things that we have to post online to, so that they're public. It mentions something called all mooring assignment transactions, that's also supposed to be posted. I interpret this language the same way that Mr. Starkey does, that I, I looked at all the things that were posted, I talked to BION. We don't have what I would also consider as a transaction log. You know, a financial person might call it a general ledger, someone else might call it an audit trail. So it's the puts and takes, it's like, add mooring, change mooring, you know, that type of transaction logs, so there's traceability. I also agree that we're not currently meeting the bylaw, but I think the bylaw isn't actually clear on what we mean by a transaction list or a transaction log. So I would recommend that we, as we deliberate these other things related to the harbor, I recommend that we clarify this language in the bylaw. What is, what does it mean to have all mooring assignment transactions? What does that mean? And perhaps we could get asked the harbor advisory committee to outline, what are the, you know, few data elements we need to collect as part of a transaction log to meet the, the spirit of what was intended when town meeting passed this? I wasn't here in 2011, so I don't know what discussion happened and what people were asking for, but I do agree this bylaw needs to be clarified. I think it would help. So, anyway, that's what I'm...
You know, there are lots of different transactions, we're not just talking about boats moving around. I mean, BION from time to time will say, I'm getting rid of these moorings, for whatever reason, I don't know.
Um, I, I think it's...
Round has changed.
Forward that a, a mooring is created, a mooring is assigned to someone.
Yeah.
A mooring is still...
Eliminated.
Removed, a mooring is, uh, uh, assigned from one person to another.
Or a name change. He said someone got married, their name changed, and it looked like the mooring was assigned to a different person, but it was the same person. So that's why there are these little nuances that, you know, we shouldn't have to necessarily, you know, figure out, but I just think we need to put those few data elements in the bylaw so it's very clear. And, and I have complete confidence that, you know, BION's doing great things and, and everything was done on the up and up, but I, I just think this would help with the transparency issue.
So are you suggesting that we put together a change to that bylaw for this time meeting?
I don't, I, I don't know what the sense of urgency is.
Again, it's your, it's your...
No, no, bylaw.
This is Section Seven, the Harbor Master.
This is the Harbor bylaw, which establishes the role of Harbor Master, says that the Harbor Master reports to the administrator.
Yeah, yeah.
It says Manchester by the seat, general bylaw.
Yeah, that is a general bylaw. I mean, you could, well, depends how, how much you want to qualify it. If, if you could put it, an explanatory expansion in the regulation, which is your approval, or you could amend through town meeting the general bylaw.
I don't have any preference, as long as it, it satisfies, you know, our residents' need for transparency. I, I, I don't have a preference, I just, we should be clear what we mean by a transaction log somewhere.
Where are we at?
Well, we need a motion, I think, for the folks who are wondering what's going to happen with their, their boats this year.
I think, the motion doesn't order that one.
Open, open, open the entire waitlist.
Let me try this, and you guys can tell me when I'm...
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Why? I'm writing here.
I know, but I'm trying to think, my brain doesn't work. I'll make a motion that we allow a one-year... Yeah, or two, I don't know what's going on.
We allow anyone on the waitlist to apply, to receive...
Receive.
A mooring from Manchester Marine for this season only.
To be el, to be eligible, that's all.
To be eligible.
To be eligible for a provisional mooring.
To be eligible for provisional mooring for the 2025 season.
Right.
Up to 10, right? 10, 10 or 12?
10.
10.
Five are already spoken for. We have to be inclusive.
I'm trying to say that again.
Oh, so we, five are, five are already spoken for, but we're going to make it inclusive of all 10 for this particular motion.
Just saying that...
Whatever there are.
Yeah.
So let me try this. I moved that...
Don't, don't.
I'll try this. I moved that we allow anyone from the mooring waiting list to receive a provisional mooring.
Be eligible for.
Be eligible for a provisional mooring from Manchester Marine for the 2025 season, up to 10.
Up to 10.
Second.
Did you get that, Eddie?
Okay.
That's my video, that's my video score.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, John?
Yes.
Anne says no?
Yes.
Kathy says yes, Brian says yes, and Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to recommend strongly that we do invite the Inspector General to...
Sure.
It, since we have no transaction log.
Yep.
To...
And then tell us what to do. Recommend so.
Yeah. See whether, in their opinion, we are following the state and local regulations.
I think that's appropriate.
Any assignment of moorings.
I'm good with that.
Yep, absolutely. Do we need a motion on that, or are you just going to go do it?
We'll let the ministry reflect there was consensus.
Okay.
There was agreement to move forward with...
Yeah, that's fine.
An audit of the operation.
Good.
Through the Inspector General's office, if they'll do it. I don't, I don't need anything else we need to know.
No. I do know that his, his program that he has now, currently, it's, it's on his database, has all that transactional history. The, the only problem is that you, you got to be able to go down to his office, sit down, talk with him, say, hey, can I have this? And he'll give you everything.
Yeah, that, that's why I went to see BION before I mentioned it, because the data is there, but it's not posted in a manner that, like I said, it's, it's, it's language. There you go.
Okay, I think, um, someone is going to come up with new language for the regulations regarding, um...
Bow and stern.
Bow and stern, the creation of new moorings.
Where, and where?
Not, the, the Harbor Masters is in charge of figuring out where things fit. That, that, that seems perfectly...
Yeah, I'm talking about the areas and things right now, it's confusion, Area One versus everything else.
And maybe at the same time, move the helical moorings back into their right corner.
Yeah, that's just out of place. Yeah, that's just out of place.
So can we put this on our action list? Cause I think we're going to need to review either the update to the, so there's the change in the file harbor regulation for area one. Then there is the additional harbor regulation change to enhance the bylaw around transactions.
Yes.
And the third thing is the audit, requesting the audit from the inspector general. So maybe we put one or a few of those on the action list under one category so we can follow up and. How long do you think it would take to like a couple of months or what's, what's a good timeframe for a follow-up?
Well, the change for that area one issue, that can be next, at your next meeting.
Okay.
And maybe we can flesh out some language about that transactional process, how to, how to convey that information.
Also to go into the regulations.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
To go into regulations.
So those could happen in the next, you know, two to four weeks easily. The IG is probably fairly lengthy process.
But, but we can get it.
So it's already on their radar. So they're already doing an investigation.
Other people that are.
They're already looking at things here.
Oh.
Oh, here?
Yes.
For us? Okay.
Yes. So we will, we will talk to them and see if they can expand it. And if not, then we will have to look at perhaps our auditing firm.
Is, is whatever they're doing here now, is that a routine audit or was it somebody requested?
Or is requested? Yeah. So we'll, we'll give an update.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
The preliminary committee update.
So as you know, three, three finalists have been advanced. You're slated to do their interviews on April 3rd. I had hoped to have some of the questions from John. I don't, I didn't receive those. No, no, you didn't directly from him. Okay. So I, I think it's appropriate for you to at least.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It would be fine for you to, to discuss some of the key areas of questioning that you want to pursue in preparation for April 3.
So how do we appear in our line of questioning in a public forum here? When we don't, you know, all the candidates are watching us right now. So without, you know, still allow some spontaneity. You know, so he's going to send us a list of questions. We can't deliberate by email. How do we settle on, you know, the questions with, without, you know?
Tipping the hand so much.
Yeah, tipping everything. Yeah.
So if, if you are pretty, if you're very concerned about, you know, revealing what the questions are ahead of time, then the way to avoid that is for, for John to send all of each of you individually his, his suggested questions, and then you send your suggestions back to him and he compiles everything.
Okay.
That's, that's how they did it with the screening committee.
Okay.
So that's, that would be the way to do it without discussing publicly now.
Right.
Of those questions.
And then each candidate responds to those questions.
During the interview.
During the interview.
Well, we, that's the other thing. We should be asking the questions.
Yeah.
So John, typically what John does is he leads off and then you do sort of the follow-up.
So I actually, because this is my first time hiring in a public forum, you know, being watched and filmed, I went on YouTube and I looked at some of the other town select boards that interviewed candidates. I watched some of the interviews and I also watched some of the meetings that when the select board did the deliberation. It was really helpful. So, you know, if you haven't done this before, I highly recommend it. What I saw was a typical panel interview where I'm, I'm sure they all hired their consultants, whatever. But each of the select board members took a turn asking questions. There was no consultant there asking the questions. We asked.
And there's one candidate there.
Yeah, so like a candidate, the ones I saw, candidate, there was a little table there, you know, and the candidate was, you know, surrounded by the select board and he, they just took turns asking questions. And anybody could certainly pipe in and ask for a follow-up, but the consultant didn't ask the questions. So.
So.
I, I went through a superintendent search and that's how we did it. So basically we decided on the questions we wanted to ask, you know, like your suggestion, Greg, back and forth. And then everybody picked
Right.
The question they felt they wanted to ask. And that's how we did it. Either, I'm, I'm not tied either way. I'm just, that's my experience.
So, so does Sean Petron become a clearinghouse for questions? Is that the way it's going to work?
So I guess I would suggest that one of you volunteer to have a conversation with John to, to discuss how you want to do this.
He, he would know the, the ways are.
Well. Yeah.
But, but you, it's, it's your show. So ultimately you get to decide. He can advise you as to what he would recommend and you can fine tune it to fit your needs.
All right.
Et cetera.
Yeah. So the current, the couple of things, issues for discussion. So one was how do we formulate the questions without the candidates knowing what they are in advance? The second was, you know, us getting to ask the, the questions ourselves. I'll send you the links, Brian. And the third was. Sorry. The third issue.
I'm getting there. All right. Good.
The third issue, which somebody brought up in one of those YouTube videos was they did not have a live feed of the interview. Because what they didn't want was one candidate being interviewed, the other candidate sitting in the parking lot, listening, right? So I'm, I'm.
Just record it.
Yeah. So they recorded it and so any citizen could view it after the fact. They, these other towns had a room, you know, big enough to accommodate the attendance they felt would be warranted based on the fact that they were not showing a live feed. So I just, these are logistics questions that I hadn't thought about until I saw these videos. And I just think we need to spend, you know, figure out how we want to do this.
I mean, I can, I can agree with that point.
Yeah. Do you think that's what, I read somewhere that's what Danris was doing? That they weren't live feeding.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the ones I watched, the interview process. Yes. Yes.
Yeah, just last week.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. I watched that one. I think the one where the select board was deliberating, I think that was conquered. It was a few years back, but still very helpful to see, you know, the chair, how, how he navigated the situation and how they. The other thing was how they discussed the candidates and how they did their deliberation because obviously you don't want to hurt anybody. You know, it's all public, you know.
So Danris is probably, was that Paradigm also?
Danris Paradigm, yes.
Oh, okay. So maybe not Petron, but somebody.
Yeah.
Okay. So they have, all right. So we still need to figure out the synthesis of these questions. I mean, we all, all have ideas here, but Petron probably can consolidate or, and he brings questions that he says, you should ask this.
Right.
You should ask that. So, I mean, I will volunteer to do that. If.
Yeah, I'd like to have some input there too.
Okay.
And the two of you could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two of you could do it together.
I think we did that the last time when we selected him. So let's team up on that.
Okay, all right.
I think, I'm just not clear on the timing since, I'm going to look at my calendar.
What is the schedule for all this stuff?
We're going to be interviewing them and.
So.
April 3rd.
April 3rd. So you're two weeks away from this Thursday.
Okay, so we need to be doing this now.
Right.
And did you get a sense from him as to when he's going to send us the questions?
I thought he should have those questions. I'm sure he has them.
Maybe you could ask him to, because we need input from everybody.
Right.
He, he needs that input from everybody. Okay.
Well, I mean, all of us can send, I mean, we just say, hey, send him 10 questions. No more than 10. 10's enough.
That might be redundant though. If he has a list, I think.
Yeah, but he can.
More efficient for us to fill in the gaps. It's also, I think we, you know, based on the packages we get and the candidates, we're going to want to ask specific questions of specific candidates based on their background, right? So.
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have to ask everybody all the same questions?
They can be tailored to the individual.
Yeah. When do we get these CVs?
You should get them next week.
How about we tell John by when we need them?
Because we need them, you know, to Kathy's point, we need them before we formulate the questions because a certain percentage of them will be specific for these.
Yes.
For these folks. You know, I mean, there are questions that relate to our town, but there are questions that relate to the apples.
Can he at least get us the general questions, you know, in a couple of days?
Yes. Yeah, he said he would have them today.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the, the candidate packages. You know, when, when can we expect?
When did you say that was?
The latest, middle of next week.
Fourth, 26th?
Yeah.
Okay. No later than the 26th?
Sure.
Okay. So then we get to review the packages and if we have any, you know, specific questions.
Additional question.
Yeah. Okay. What about the room? As far as logistics, would we want to interview the candidates here or? You know, I don't know.
Why not?
I'm just asking.
No.
We have enough, do we think any more people would show up than this?
Should we do it at this school cafeteria?
Do you recall your own interview, Greg? Was it in this room? Okay, it was in this room. Okay.
But that was before.
Oh, before.
Social media.
That's true. That's true.
World change of social media.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I was.
2010, the iPad was brand new in 2010.
Maybe the candidates ought to have access to the Manchester page to know what they're getting into.
Well, I mean, this is, this is not a public hearing in the sense that the, nobody who's here is going to be.
I have no idea. I can't sound over there.
No, but they have to be able to witness it.
They can.
They can witness it, but it will be on YouTube or it'll be, it'll be recorded.
Promoting it one way or another. I just, like I said, watching your videos caused me to think about questions.
Right.
And if, so I, I think we're all saying we don't want a live feed, right? We just want to record it and people can watch it after the fact. And the only other question I had about it is for people who might want to watch it live, do they, is this the right wrong?
Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry, what?
We're just, I'm sorry, we're trying to think how we're going to record it without streaming it. This is all through Zoom, but.
16.
We can see what they're available.
They should be able to.
Well, they did it for other towns. Somebody did it for another town. So there should be a way to do it.
We'll check. We'll check.
Okay.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
So we need Petron's.
Yep.
If we get Petron's questions, we send our questions back.
Right.
You two, Dr. Petron, about the combined questions.
Yes.
Then he sent.
Who's leading the questioning?
Well.
Right.
So he's, well, I'm assuming we're all taking turns. I don't know.
Well, he, he's sending the questions. Are we sending them back before we get these backgrounds or after? It's really going to be kind of after. Because some of the questions we're sending him are specific based upon the backgrounds. So whether Petron sends these questions tomorrow or the next day, it doesn't make any difference. He just has to get it a couple of days before March 26th. Because there's not too much that. There's some we can do, but still.
We interviewed Jake. Yeah, what I'm saying is that the, we had questions.
If we can get them to 24, then we'll crush that.
That's your question. That's your question.
So we get it on the fly, you know, can't really do that stuff on the fly.
Okay.
But you can have.
Oh, yeah.
You can have standard questions and then have follow-up.
We, we all have standard ones.
Right.
But we, we are all free to ask other questions. We're not bound by those questions.
Right.
But you want to, I think the premise is you want to have that standardization upfront as much as possible so that each candidate is getting a fair shot at, at giving their spin.
Want to hear their answer to the same questions.
Right.
They would answer the same question.
You know, so you, you can, but you're going to have to tailor it to the person at some point because they come from, they have different backgrounds.
Get all that?
I will call you out tomorrow, but I will also.
Thank you.
Say that the two of you will be reaching out to him.
All right.
What else going on?
Um, liaison updates.
I have no time.
Okay, liaison. Oh, actually, hold on a minute. John, do you have anything more? Kathy's looking.
I'm pretty much empty. I've been away a lot. I can't see. I'm trying to think. I know Chuck, I did speak with Chuck about the water meters. He's more or less, between the consultants and everything else, come up with, I think, a, a favored supplier. Okay. But that Kathy, when you suggested the AI, and he was impressed, I was impressed because I sat down with Chuck to review this. Feeding all of the information into AI, what your RFP was, and having his spit back.
Yeah.
It was a very good summary. What they rated and what the consultant rated were not quite the same, but still was very useful.
It's time saver. That's all.
It was.
Time saver.
It was. So other things, no, I'm not going to say anything about seniors. They've already been talked about here. And, you know, historic commission's kind of quiet.
Okay, I remembered what I wanted. So there was a economic development. Breakfast Gloucester. Yes.
Chamber. Yeah.
At the Chamber. Thank you. Gloucester, Chamber. Yeah. So I attended with Steve Carhart from the Downtown Improvement Committee. Very informative. They, they outlined some resources. I was really hoping Mark could have been there and someone from the planning board, but it was just the two of us. They were very helpful in outlining resources that towns and cities could use to help you know, create a vision for their downtown and also, you know, grants that were available to help do that. And they talked a lot about what makes, you know, good downtown. And so I think Steve went away thinking about how the Downtown Improvement Committee could reach out to the business community, you know, working with Jim Brown and, and the Chamber to try and you know, better understand what we want our downtown to be. We have empty storefronts. People are worried about that. Left to their own devices, you know, the property owners are just going to do whatever they can to fill the voids. I guess Gloucester was funding an actual district manager, you know, cities have more needs in terms of their downtown management, but someone to make sure, you know, the streets are clean, the, the signs are in good shape, you know, the aesthetics, et cetera. There was somebody whose job it was to worry about that, right?
I'm sorry.
Yep.
You're advocating for another job?
No, no, no. It's Gloucester. But, but what it clarified is there's somebody who's responsible for the downtown. And the question is, in our town, who is that? Is right now we have that committee, but are they really responsible for determining the, what the downtown should be? You know, should it be 20% retail, you know, well, there's got to be a strategy for the downtown. That's why I really wanted Mark there because I know he's talking about, you know, potential zoning change. He's been talking about that with the planning board, but before you talk about zoning, you should talk about what you want your downtown to be. So it was a very informative breakfast. I do think if no one else is going to get engaged, that the Downtown Improvement Committee will, will take a stab at learning more about those resources, bringing them to Mark and, and trying to, to make some traction there. So that was that. at learning more about those resources, bringing them to Mark and, and trying to, to make some traction there. So that was that.
Um, all right.
No, uh, just talking, just checking my shovel right now.
Pickleball start. Wait a minute, when does pickleball start?
April, it should be up.
Coming up.
I'm just saying.
This is time leaves. Driving me crazy. April 1st, Gerald just said. Thanks.
That's a perfect date.
Each tags two. Just hang around. She's gonna give me more information too. Checking with me tomorrow, yeah.
School makes its decision on its budget. Um, as I said earlier, Essex has decided that it will level fund the school and put any increase in the school budget on them.
Which means?
Well, their people, their people aren't saying that yet.
Town administrator and the finance committee and the select are saying. That's the way it will be presented to the town. But.
What's the budget increase hit for them on that?
About eight and a half.
Eight and a half?
Yeah.
Okay. Quite a statement.
And it may be bigger because Essex had a, had a, at a, another meeting explained that they thought that the school should use 150,000 less of their, um, reserves.
Oh.
And, um, not accept 20 school choice students. So that's taking $250,000 out of the support for the budget that doesn't come from the town. I don't know what the school committee is gonna do about that.
They, they wanted to reduce the revenue?
Yes.
They want, they wanted to save it for the, for next year.
And they think that the reserves would be saved for next year. The non, not taking choice students, they think is just. They're concerned that the choice students, um, will not bring in more revenue than they.
Okay.
They don't bring in much, what do they bring in? They don't bring in all.
They bring in $5,000 per head. And, yes, they, five per head, where we are actually burning $27,000 per head. On the other hand, the cost of one extra kid in a classroom of 16.
Should cost maybe more than class of 17.
Yeah.
Yes, the same.
So, um, and it is also true that if a choice student needs special services. Those special services are paid by sending him, um, and not by, by the receiving.
Interesting. That's, that's a state rule, or?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah. Interesting, okay.
Great. Um, consent agenda.
I have something to do here.
Um, that's longevity bench. Yeah, that makes sense. And, um, volunteer initiative, um, Jim Dietrich.
Who's that? Oh, that's me. I can try to read this.
You can do it. Can you read it?
I, I can.
Okay. Start with it.
And any comments to the consent agenda? I move that the board approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Kathy, yes. Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Have administrators report.
Um, yeah, the sub-explanatory of Pleasant Street site, uh, looking into the cost of the, called the 21E contamination review. Trying to get some cost estimates for that. Senior Center fundraising efforts phase one is, is well underway, developing the campaign, identifying key donors. As we talked about, it'll get underway this summer under the soft version and then the public, public face of that will get underway in September. Nomination papers for elections are due April 1st.
Um, do you know, return papers?
Yeah, I don't have an update on any term that.
Actually, I have my letter, haven't.
Lisa, you have your hand up?
Yes, um, I did raise my hand. I wanted to, uh, thank everyone for the approval of the, uh, for the longevity bench project, for the bench, uh, in front of the friendship tree. I appreciate it very much. It's gonna be a very special bench. I don't know, I mean, your ongoing support has been, um, just so appreciated. Thank you so much. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Lisa.
What's that?
Move to your turn.
That's it.
You can't.
Yes, yes.
Brian? Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says listen, I heard John say yes.
Yes, I jumped the gun. I jumped the gun.
What do we, uh, we need to sign a letter of license?
Yes.